Everyone. We call to order the City of Carson Housing Authority, Successor Agency, Public Financing Authority, and the City Council. Today is Tuesday, August 6th at 5:05 or 5:02 PM. In accordance with the American Disabilities Act of 1990, if you require a disability-related modification or accommodation to attend or participate in the meeting, including auxiliary aides or services, please contact the City Clerk's office at 310-952-1720 at least 48 hours prior to the meeting. The public may address the members of the City Council on any matters within the jurisdiction of the City Council or any items on the agenda of the City Council during the designated public comment periods. There will be two oral communication sessions, one for agendized items and one for non-agendized items. The oral communications of the agenda is limited to a duration of one hour unless otherwise approved by the City Council. Public viewing is available on the city's website, and the meeting will be streamed live over the internet via www.carsonca.gov or on YouTube, www.youtube.com/cityofcarsoncalifornia official YouTube type page. It will also can be viewed on cable TV, Spectrum 35, Channel 35, and AT&amp;T Channel 99. If you are not able to attend the meeting in person, public comments can be submitted before the meeting via email to City Clerk's office at Carson, California. The cutoff time to submit any email communications is 3:00 PM on the day of the meeting. Written communications can be dropped off at the City Clerk's office or in the white box outside of City Hall. The cutoff time to submit any written communication is 3:00 PM on the day of the meeting. Written communications dropped off at the City Clerk's office or in the white box or any email received will not be read aloud at this council meeting, but will be circulated to the council members and incorporated into the record. Madam City Clerk, roll call.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Rojas?
Present.
Councilmember Dear?
Here.
Councilmember Hicks?
Present.
Mayor Protem Hilton?
Present.
Mayor Davis Holmes?
Present. I'll have a flag salute by Councilwoman, please. Please raise.
Your right hand over your heart, ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Is our pastor here, Pastor Cook? Yes, you are. We'll have an invocation by Pastor Cook, please.
May we all bow our heads for a moment of prayer. To the God of unfailing love, we call upon you because you have all power. No matter the circumstances, God is still God, and he loves all of his children. No matter the circumstances, we still know that you are our strength. Show the wonder of your great love and draw us closer together so that we may be able to stand together as one. God establishes in love that your Son, Jesus Christ, has done one thing and one thing only, and that is to die for us. Open up all of our spiritual lives that we can see your work in everything. As we call on the one who is in full control, please strengthen our family, our friends, and our communities. May Christ dwell richly in our hearts as we find strength and increase in power. Fill us with your precious love from the inside out and fill us with hope and uplift us so that when we fall, your hand is right there. Grant us joy while giving us the courage to face what's ahead. Cover us with your precious love and your peace that surpasses all understanding. Be present in our lives and remind us of all of your promises as we move forward. In Jesus' name we pray, and we all say amen.
Amen. We're gonna put all our phones on vibrate, right? Vibrate. Closed session items 2 through 7, Madam Clerk, or is there any public comment?
No, Madam Mayor.
Madam City Attorney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The council will meet in closed session pursuant to government code section 54957.6 with City Manager, Assistant City Manager, and Human Resources Officer to conduct labor negotiations with AIM, CPSA, AFSMI, Local 809, and 1017, as well as unclassified management. The council will meet pursuant to government code section 54956.9D1 to confer with legal counsel in the matter of Camp Carson LLC versus Carson Reclamation Authority, case number 20STCV16461. The council will meet pursuant to the same code section in two existing litigation matters that are workers' comp cases. One is Candler versus City of Carson, case number ADJ14785335, and the other one is Polito versus City of Carson, case number ADJ18022950. The council will meet pursuant to the same code section but subsection D2 or D3 and E1 because there's exposure to litigation in one case. And lastly, the council will meet pursuant to government code section 54956.9D4 because the city is considering whether to initiate litigation in two potential matters. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. An hour, hour and a half?
I would give it an hour and a half to be safe.
Okay, we should be back about 6:45. Oh, we want to come back before then. We may have to go back and re-close session, so anything that we don't finish by 6:15, we'll come back out, reconvene, and then necessary, go back in. So we're gonna recess to closed session. We're back. Madam or Mr. City Manager could report on closed session items, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item 2024-0651, conference with labor negotiator. That item was not taken up in closed session. Item number 3, 2024-0653, conference with legal counsel for existing litigation in one case, case number 20STCV16461, no reportable action was taken. Item number 4, 2024-0673, conference with legal counsel for existing litigation, case number ADJ14785335, no reportable action was taken. Item number 5 for 2024-0689, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, case number ADJ18022950, no reportable action was taken. Item number 6, 2024-0686, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation because there was exposure in one case, and there was no reportable action taken. And then item number 7, 2024-0649, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation to potential cases regarding government code sections 5496, 54956.9D4, and no reportable action taken. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Manager. And now we're gonna, item number 8, the chief is not here. Lieutenant Ayalo, are you here from our acting? You're back, welcome back. Our acting captain, welcome back.
Thank you, thank you. Vacation was nice.
Good, we all need one of those.
Short presentation today. A couple things. On July 23rd, I was able to participate in an emergency response training with Cal Water. Also, on July 23rd, I attended the town hall that we had here at Carson Park. July 24th, Sergeant Hernandez, our community relations sergeant and I, attended the third quarter Carson Station Community Advisory Committee meeting where CHP and our county host team spoke regarding street takeover, street racing, and homelessness. July 25th, Sergeant Hernandez and our community relations office conducted an employee safety training with our Herbalife Nutrition Company. It's kind of like an active shooter training. August 1st, our special assignment sergeant, Sergeant Berg and Sergeant Draper participated here in a Carson Town Hall meeting. And yesterday, a bunch of our staff showed up on their own time, and we kind of helped clean up the station because tomorrow, we are hosting our annual community night out. It starts at 5:00 PM, it ends at 8:00. I invite everyone here and/or everyone here and people listening online to attend. I think it's gonna be a great family event. That concludes my report for today.
That was brief, thank you. Any questions for our captain?
Madam Mayor. The constituent requests about the homeless on Main Street, was that dealt with today?
Yes, it was. I'm still waiting to get a report back from my sergeant, but we sent deputies out to go address it.
All right, thank you very much. Great job.
Madam Mayor.
Councilman.
Yes, Lieutenant Ayalo, I have one concern regarding Delamo and Wilmington. There was a recent street takeover again at that location, and I did talk with Lieutenant Boulder about it in regards to, we need to do something about that because we just redid the surfacing of the street, brand-new concrete, and they were out there, I think it was either Friday night or Saturday night, I think it was, that they were out. We did have cameras that were up, we were able to see some of it, but the cameras didn't get everything. So maybe the positions of the cameras need to be tweaked or something, but that cannot keep going on in that intersection.
Okay. No, we'll do, I'll let our team know, and just so you and everybody here knows, we also have a relationship with CHP. CHP has a street takeover, street racing task force where we communicate when we find out if there's, if we can find out ahead of time if there's gonna be a street takeover, we actually send units there before it's supposed to happen to stop it from happening. And then periodically, we deploy the teams to try and, they drive around and look for, to try and catch them in the act. But with the videos, we will look at the video, or look at the camera position, look at videos, or maybe even see if we, maybe we can put an extra camera or something to address it. So, yeah, we'll take a look.
The council meeting is not on TV?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, thank you for announcing. The, we've been having systems issues with Granicas, as you all know. This meeting will be our final meeting as we move over to the community center so we can implement the new system. And so we're, it's not streaming, but they're gonna replay it and rerun it, so it is recording. So those that are trying to watch, I think we've been getting some messages that they've been trying to go online to watch the current meeting, but it's not available. And that's, again, another challenge that we've had to the system, so thankfully, this will be the last time we'll have to fight with this system that we're currently involved with and how the new system implemented, so.
To the city, ma'am, so you're saying that it's not on cable, but it's on the internet or neither one?
It's on neither one, but they're recording, so that way it can be replayed and have it replayed on the local television and then also be able to put back onto the city's website.
You mean, all that technology back there, nobody can put it on Facebook Live or anything like that? YouTube?
They can, they can do that, but I think it's not gonna, it just won't, you won't have the audio plugged into those that are trying to listen. That's the only issue, I think, though they haven't, but they're trying to get it working at this point, and the consultant's not being very responsive at the time.
Hmm, we in the new consultant?
Oh, we've already moved on from them, and so that's the new, the new consultant will be in for the next meeting.
Well, to my residents that are here tonight, you heard it firsthand. We're gonna air this meeting several times because we want to celebrate what we're doing here in the city of Carson. And so, Captain, thank you for your report. Any more questions for our captain?
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you. On the agenda tonight is a proclamation recognizing the establishment of a sister of City of Carson, LA 28 Planning Committee, in preparation for the 2028 Olympics and Paralympic Games. And before I come down, I just want to make a couple of statements before we go down. I want to thank all the organizations for coming out. You heard the call, and you're here because this is gonna be your event here in the city of Carson. It's very important that we get all of the, our residents, all the nonprofits involved in planning this event. But, and everyone knows that I'm gonna be leaving tomorrow, and I'm excited about going to visit Paris for the 2024 Olympics. The flag will be coming back to the U.S. And, but what's more exciting to me is the fact that it gives us an opportunity to witness the 2024 Games in Paris, but it gives me the opportunity and the delegation to witness the world-class athletes, and it's a chance to gather invaluable insights, forge new strategic partnerships, and lay the groundwork for the 2028 Olympics when Los Angeles and our very own city of Carson will play host to the world. We are going to play host to the world. The potential benefits of this visit is significant. Number one, our infrastructure development. Observing how Paris has transformed its city escape to accommodate the Olympics will provide us with innovative ideas for enhancing our own infrastructure. We can bring back best practices in sustainable urban development that will benefit the cities long after the Olympics. It's called a community benefits package. We're not just hosting, but we want to make sure that we benefit from it in the long run. Economic growth. The Olympics are a powerful driver of economic activity. By studying Paris's approach to maximizing local business involvement, we can ensure Carson recaps the economic benefits of the 2028 Games. This includes opportunities for small businesses, job creation, and tourism. Community engagement, that's why you're here tonight. The spirit of the Olympics is bringing people together. We will explore how Paris is fostering community involvement and excitement leading up to the Games. This will help us design initiatives that unite our residents and bring a sense of pride in hosting such a prestigious event. And I'm glad you all are here tonight, again. Sustainability. Paris is known for its commitment to sustainability, and the 2024 Olympics are one of the greener, is one of the greenest ever. We can learn from their efforts to minimize environmental impact and bring those lessons back to Carson, ensuring our Olympic preparations align with the city's commitment for environmental justice. Global exposure. Hosting the Olympics here will put Carson on the global stage. The LA 28 Games will drive access to youth sports with $160 million investment to sports kids across Los Angeles, the single largest investment in youth sports development in California. This is an opportunity to inspire our young people to promote healthy lifestyles and build a legacy of excellence in our community. Additionally, the Games will bring employment opportunities, economic benefits, and pride to the people across Los Angeles. As we prepare for this historic event, we must consider how we can leverage the Olympics to upgrade our transportation and communication links, ensuring that the benefits of hosting the Games span far beyond the few weeks of competition. We want to have benefits long after the Games are over. Los Angeles will be hosting Olympic Games for the third time, having previously hosted in 1932 and 1984. It will be also our first time hosting the Paralympic Games, making a significant moment in our city's history. We're making history. To meet the requirements of hosting such event, we will need to ensure that we have the infrastructure in place, including hotel accommodations and an Olympic Village capable of housing thousands of athletes and officials. We're working, the Marriott is coming to Carson, it's already been approved, and so we're expanding what we can do here in the city of Carson to make us one of the most prestigious. Can you guys hear me? Oh, you can hear me in the back, okay. So what I want to say to the community groups that have come out here tonight, you will be a part of the planning committee for the 2028 Olympics. We cannot put on an Olympic, host the 12 events that we're gonna host here in the city of Carson without your support. We're known for the city that puts on events for every ethnic group, and we're gonna showcase what Carson is all about, the diversity that we represent here in the great city of Carson. And as I look around the room, I see all, several organizations, not all, there's some. I've received phone calls that couldn't be here. I see our Union Brothers are here tonight also. I met with them yesterday. So we're excited just to say, Carson, you're gonna be on a global stage. DeAnthony Langston, are you here? Elizabeth Dantis from Stevenson Village? Elizabeth? Oh, that's our photographer. She wanted, she felt out of court to speak.
Hi, good evening, Madam Mayor, our prestige Mayor Protem and council members. I am Elizabeth Dantis, and I am representing Stevenson Village as a resident. I'm also, which may surprise you, this, well, not surprise, but Stevenson Park Volunteer Association President. I just wanted to come and say I am so, so excited to have the LA 28 Olympics here in Carson. I'm a little nervous, but I'm okay. Just because my excitement and my passion, because I'm so excited that our mayor is gonna be going to Paris and accepting this Olympic torch and bringing it here to our city. It's so, it's so, it's so cool. It's so cool, and I, my family is excited, my 10-year-old and 7-year-old, we have been watching, and my husband, we've all been watching the Olympics nonstop, and we're super excited also to have rugby right at our Dignity Health Sports Center, and I hope we can just like go in and see the tickets, I mean, get tickets and go there because the women's rugby is amazing. So I'm so excited. I think that our city is the jewel of the South Bay, and that we should be there. We should be, have our mayor represent our city in Paris. It makes the most sense to me, it makes the most sense to me because if the city of LA is there, if, you know, we're, we're having LA come to our city as well. So this is, this is our city, so we should have a representative. What better than our mayor, Mayor Lila Davis Holmes there? So I'm excited for her to pass the torch. I'm excited to watch it on TV, on Instagram, on everywhere, just because as she represents us, it just feels like we're going, we're with her in spirit as well. And that, yeah, yeah, you can keep on, you can keep on. So as the president of the Stevenson Park Volunteer Association, and since I do have a little more time, I also want to just say thank you so much again to our mayor and our council members for our city parks and what you guys have done for our youth and how our kids can just play and be safe and have fun and play their sports and without any, like, wrong reasons for like, for people to be worried about paying or anything like that, and that everyone is welcomed in our diverse community. So thank you so much. I'm so proud of our city, and I love our city so much, and I'm just so thankful to be here and to represent our Stevenson Village and the city of Carson. And what else can I say? You know? All the things, all the things. So thank you, thank you, from the bottom of my heart. I love it, I love it, I love it. And I also get to see firsthand, as the photographer, city photographer, I get to see firsthand of all the great things we do.
Madam Mayor, that's three minutes.
Thank you, thank you. I just want to clarify, Karen Bass will be accepting the flag and bringing it home. I may or may not, I will be touring and everything, but I've been informed that she will be the only one that's on stage, so if you don't see me, don't panic and say where she is. Where's our mayor? I did reach out, and they told me that the flag will be given to our, the city of LA because that is official host, but I do have access, all access. But it's not about me going to Paris to be on a vacation, it's about all those items that I said we were going. How can we, as a city, benefit from being on this global stage? Because your mayor's already been to Paris, okay? On vacation, and they have outlined an agenda for me, so if you don't see me on camera, don't panic, I'm there, okay? DeAnthony Langston?
Thank you for having me. First of all, I'd like to thank the City Council for again supporting Real Run, Nike Real Run this year. Sunday's our championship day. I know the mayor won't be here, but I'm inviting everybody else to come out. We started a women's league last year, it's been very successful. That game's at 12 o'clock, and the men is at 2 o'clock, so we're very happy. Also, I would like to thank my park and rec commissions for being here. We have four of them here, so that says a lot for them coming out to the City Council, but we just really want to thank you all for your services you do to make our parks safe. That's the most important thing as a father, as a parent, growing up here in the area. My kids, it's always safe, and we have a daycare for 25 years now, and it's great to have the kids go up to the parks and recs and be safe. We're so excited about the mayor going to Paris, proud dad moment. My daughter's there working right now for the men's and women's basketball team, she's covering the audio, so.
All right, Carson.
I told her to definitely look for the mayor of Carson when she comes down there. Also, I'd like to thank Revon coming here with great new energy for the city of Carson. We're excited about them coming out here. I met with Trish earlier, and she has a lot of great plans, but, you know, just living in the city of Carson, man, I'm very blessed. You know, and I can't say enough about, you know, the services that we have here. Thank you all, from, thank you all from the bottom of my heart for supporting us again. Sunday, come on out, the women play at 12 o'clock and the men at 2:00 PM. Thank you so much, thank you.
At Ford Park, at Veterans? DeAnthony Coach, at Veterans?
Veteran Sports Complex.
Well, we want to thank you for giving our kids the ones something to do during, you know, the summer months. I really appreciate the Nike Real Run, all the tennis shoes and things that you give these kids, it's just unbelievable.
And also, I forgot, the mayor's been very, very, very strong in supporting us, and we have served so many kids in the clinics we've done. Thank you to the mayor, thank you for the council right there, but the most important thing, we absolutely get to serve those kids, and that's what it's about right there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Afrida Bell? Afridia, Afridia Bell? Carson African American Empowerment Coalition? Is that you, Dell, or is Afrida? Oh, there you are, hi there.
Good evening. My name is Afrida Bell, and I am the secretary with the Carson African American Empowerment Coalition. We are here to support our mayor and her mission to guide and uplift the city. We are proud to be residents of a city where our mayor is so proactive in guiding and leading the youth of today to a better and unlimited future. We stand in support with you as you help escort the Olympic flag from Paris to Carson. Thank you.
Thank you. RJ Wicks? Mr. Wicks, are you here? Hi, RJ. I see you sitting over there.
Hi, everybody. My name is RJ Wicks. I'm resident of Carson, California. I'm also here speaking on behalf of the Carson African American Empowerment Coalition. I'm one of the recipients of the 2024, 2025 scholarships that they gave out, they give out. Yes, thank you. I recently graduated from Pepperdine University as a posse scholar. Also, with the help of the CA AEC, I graduated with a bachelor's in political science, my California teaching credential, and the certificate in conflict management at Pepperdine's Law School. And this fall, actually this month, I'll be moving out to New York City to get my master's degree at Columbia University in Education Policy.
Wow, thank you.
Thank you. And yeah, I'm just here to say thank you on behalf of the scholars. I know we just had someone come up and speak, but it is truly inspiring and super exciting to see that our city will be going out to Paris and that we'll be able to host so many many great, um, events out here. Um, I think there's your leadership and everything that you've done is just so inspiring to us, and just hearing your agenda, all the things that you're going out there for is not just a vacation. It's on the time for us to see how we can really use this platform, um, for our city, and it truly inspires me. So, thank you for that, thank you for the CAAC, and yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Our young people, I love it, I love it. Uh, Dell Huff?
Good evening. I won't be before you long. Um, I was just told to call all my people up, so I'm gonna ask that all organizations, if you will stand up. I don't wanna take away from. Well, see, that's what I was just fixing to say. This is how we show love. Uh, let me just say that as a result of a brainchild from Diane, as it normally happens in Carson, we are one family, we are a melting pot. This is all of your followers, or what, all we had to do is get one phone call, and we start things going. Madam Mayor, um, I have known you since you were a supervisor at Stevenson Park. I have watched your career grow. We have become dynamic friends, all of us together. Just to let you know how proud we are, and how excited, as you have heard, that we are, that Carson will be hosting. Carson is continuously gaining, Carson is continuously growing, and Carson is continually loving under your direction here in the city of Carson. We thank you for being such an elegant lady of change. We appreciate that, we certainly do. And we are going to strive to do everything that we possibly can to continue to support you on whatever level. Carson is the best place in the world to be, and now, I will just ask anybody that wants to, to stand up. This is just a love child. Congratulations, Madam Mayor. Thank you for representing us so well. We love you, we're proud of the work that you have done. We can't wait to see what else is gonna happen in Carson. God bless.
Thank you. Alex Ganglet? I'm calling, come on down. Oh, Fred, oh, Fred. Hi, Fred. Yes, Fred. Uh, will you wanna wait until I call you up, or you wanna present it now? Okay, we'll wait until we call the group up. Did anyone else wanna speak? Diane Thomas?
I have a presentation.
Okay, when we, okay. When we come down, you can do it then. Carson's Women's Club, come on down. Carson's Women's Club.
And all of you. Carrie Perez here. Um, I'm here representing the Carson Women's Club, which all of you are members of. Thank you very much. Lula, Ms. Lula, we love you so much. I told you on the way in, we're really looking forward to you going on the trip. We wanted to come out here and support you, uh, and as you know, and you said, we will be volunteers as we are hostesses of the city, and we'll be vol, we will be volunteering when you get the Olympics going in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem and I are the, um, on the ad hoc committee for this, uh, planning committee, and we will, once we get everything in place, we will be meeting with all the board members. Yes, come on down, Fred. Yeah, you can wait. When we call you up, you do your presentation, I think. Yes, yes. I know you do.
Good evening, Mayor, city council, everybody in attendance. My name is Fred Doc Doc Dossel. I represent the Philippine Dependence Day Foundation, among other groups and organizations. I'm very, very proud to say that I live, I work, I pray, and I play in the city of Carson, and, thank you. And along with everybody here tonight, physically, and when this goes online, I'm sure we share that same excitement that everybody else has expressed before me. Having the city of Carson, the jewel of the South Bay, in the global stage, I think that's a testament to the passion that our community shows, and is a great indication of the leadership that you all have shown our community. And that really is, that goes a long way to Carson fulfilling our slogan of future unlimited. Not just here in the South Bay, not just in Los Angeles, in Southern California, but again, on a global stage. Having four LA 28 events hosted here in the city of Carson, so that, we, we truly do appreciate Mayor, city council, and everybody else here tonight for everything that you all do. Thank you so much. And yes, we, you know, our talents are at our city's disposal in ensuring that we host this event successfully. So, thank you so much. Appreciate you, thank you.
Mr. City Manager, there are more than four. Could you tell them it's 12, I think?
Thank, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So, we do have four confirmed events. Um, there's a potential of 13 to 15 total events, uh, in the city of Carson that will be hosted here. We'll get the definite and confirmed number as we move forward after, obviously, Paris 28, uh, ends. Uh, but those four events, as we spoke of, we know it's the velodrome there at Cal State Dominguez Hills, that's gonna be for the, uh, the cycling. We have the rugby, uh, that will be, as it was mentioned, for both men's and women's, and then also tennis. So, we know that tennis will be utilized, and it, this isn't to, uh, slight our Dignity Health Sports Park, cause we love our folks there at Dignity Health, but it is named as the Carson Sports Park. So, when it's listed globally, it will be listed as Carson Sports Park and not Dignity Health, so. Definitely kudos to you as the city of Carson, so. Um, and then, of course, there's gonna be multiple, a, a, a number of events that will be hosted that we aren't allowed to mention at this time, cause it's still being vetted through, but we're definitely excited for what's going to be coming forward.
Well, I'm equally excited, because you and I sit at the roundtable when they told us no about putting Carson on something, and we said yes. And a couple of weeks ago, we were told, yes, Carson will be listed, because these venues are in the great city of Carson, not in LA City, in the city of Carson. Uh, Diane Thomas?
Thank you. Okay, so, in 1984, when the Olympics came to Los Angeles, Carson was a part of that 1984 Olympics, and we know that we were. We got absolutely no recognition. When I heard that it was coming in 2028, I said, this will not happen again. And from the time I heard that our mayor was going to be leading a delegation to go to Paris, cause yes, we have been there on vacation, so this is business now, okay? We have got to step up to the plate and make sure, if we're going to be seen on a global stage, let's act like it. We're gonna send you off in style, with prayers, with recognition, for not only our mayor, but our city council, our staff, the residents of Carson. They will know who we are and what we stand for. And that's how this idea for tonight, I'm, I'm, I'm really a little bombed out, cause I felt like I was fighting a battle, cause I wanted it to be in the community center, and I wanted every resident in the city of Carson that wanted to be here to be able to get in, but we'll get past that.
Please.
Cause we got four years to reek to make it right, right? And we will make it right. I am so excited. I have been glued to the television when I could be, watching these Olympics, and they have been so exciting. If you have missed it, you go back online, look at it. Our teams are incredible, the USA is incredible, and when it comes to Carson, you ain't seen nothing yet. We will have a parade in Carson announcing the coming of the 2028, you hear that? A parade. We're gonna block off streets, we're gonna decorate like crazy, and it's going to be a good time. When they leave Carson, they will know that they have been to Carson. So, let's get excited, let's make it happen. Thank you for the time, and I do have a presentation to you on behalf of our group. Thank you.
Uh, let's give Diane and the Carson Citizens Cultural Arts Foundation, she didn't, look at all these beautiful decorations, the balloons and, and things, and I wanna just say thank you. Uh, you know, some people say, no, you don't need to do that, but it's not a pleasure trip, it's a business trip. And as some people wanna count it, oh, she's just gonna, no, I'm not. We're talking about infrastructure, economic growth, community engagement, um, sustainability, and global exposure. That's what we're talking about. It's not about your mayor going on vacation, cause she go on vacation every year. Uh, and, and so, I just wanna say, uh, thank you to the, um, LA 28 for inviting me. Uh, they invited myself, Rex Richardson, Mayor Butts, and I, uh, I'm mayor from Los Angeles, because all, most of the events is LA 28 Olympics, so I just wanted my little piece of the pie for Carson. Uh, Claudia, are you here? Claudia? Claudia's not here. Yeah, well, Rick Polito, are you here?
Good evening, city Carson, and to all of our community, and to our residents, to all the employees, and to everybody that's here tonight. I know it's gonna be on live, uh, pretty soon, uh, like manager said, probably tomorrow, but on behalf of all of us here from the Gulf, uh, neighborhood, uh, block captains here in Gulf Amu, we're very excited to hear we're having representation. The only concerns we had was, uh, the be frugal. When you spend Carson's taxpayers' dollars, that we, like you said earlier, no pleasure, but strictly business, and also that, uh, we're very excited. I've been watching them myself, and Simone is like, she's gold. That little gymnastics lady is the best. So, you know, you guys, we're very proud of her, so let's give her a big hand. So, on, on that note, so you know, uh, we'll be watching, and we'll be looking for, uh, uh, that balance sheet when our finance director tells us how much we spent over there. So, let's be very frugal on our expenditures of our taxpayers' dollar. Unless you wanna go, like you say, on business, but spend it out of your own pocket, which is okay too.
Oh, nice of you.
So, anyways, uh, I do have something else to report, and that is, uh, first and foremost, CNC. The first Carson Neighborhood Council meeting will be on April 29th, and the founder, we're gonna be having it Ted Burgers. It's a citywide, uh, invitation to everybody to come out to the Neighborhood Council meeting, uh, be at Ted Burgers on 220th and Main Street. This is not a city function, this is a, uh, you know, city of Carson, city council, which, uh, as, as I said earlier, it's more of a stakeholders from the community. Long overdue, I've been waiting patiently to see what's going on for the last seven, eight months, and I haven't seen the progress I'd like to see. So, this will be bringing us together and sharing with our families. People that work here, people that live here, and people that play here will be able to come over and participate. We will have eventually see, uh, Neighborhood Council meetings at every district, and they will have their own district, uh, Neighborhood Councils too. We're starting ours in District Two. Uh, our mayor Jim Dear will be, uh, the advisor over it, and also.
Your councilman Jim Dear?
Excuse me, don't interrupt me.
Your councilman.
And, uh, my time is not up. You like to do that, you got, yeah, okay, well, we're gonna bring up issues and topics that will be like the 157 acres, the family fund center, the DEI for our management and our, and our, uh, city employees. Top heavy management being, uh, demographics are not meeting the need of the community. We wanna get a Samoan, and we wanna get a Latino on the, on the dices, cause right now, we have one, two, three, four, I count, four, five, uh, elected officials that are African-American, which is fine, but we do need to have some diversity up here. So, the, the Neighborhood Council will be meeting to talk about that.
Madam Mayor, that's three minutes.
Yeah, your three minutes are up, Mr. Polito. Your three minutes are up, Mr. Polito. We were on such a good note. We were on such a good note. Thank you, thank you. Uh, Diane, could you come give me some closing remarks to get rid of that? Negatives, negative stuff. Oh, fly, oh, you are Claudia. Okay, famous one.
Can I, um, before you start the time, uh, let me just say this too. The city of Carson is a beautiful city, and I have to say that, why? Because of the ladies that live in the city of Carson. But at the same time, I have to exclude the men, I won't include the ladies. So, now, Ms. Lula, you look beautiful. Monica, you look beautiful. So, basically, um, I'm here tonight because I spoke to Monica, she showed me that the employees' benefits is well taken care of so far, and, um, that's the reason I'm here tonight, but, um, I wanted to say to the city manager, assistant city manager, that, um, you did not call me in regards to this situation. So, because I was guaranteed that the, um, employees' medical didn't take care of, I'm gonna give you a pass. Because the last time I came, the mayor made a clear, talk to Claudia outside so we can resolve the situation, but I'm gonna give you a pass tonight. So, thank you for, you know, allowing me to speak here tonight, and, um, I admire the city of Carson. I didn't know that they had a street named Panama. Oh, my God. But we have to put Panama's for lovers only, but that's okay, when you get a chance. So, basically, thank you very much. And Cedric, how you doing? Mr. Dear, how you doing? So, ladies, please, before I leave, please, whatever you do, continue to remain as beautiful as you are, only for me. Thank you very much. Okay, bye-bye.
Bye, Claudia. We miss Claudia. Claudia used to be an employee here. Um, I'm gonna ask my colleagues to join me down front for some presentations. We will be, Mayor Pro Tem Julie Ray, but come to the DS, please. Come, come have a few words. I will not leave you without you saying something. Mayor Pro Tem, former Mayor Pro Tem. Yes, I do.
Good evening, all. I wasn't planning to speak, but any opportunity, I'm here. I just want to congratulate our mayor for making sure, and the city council, for making sure that we are going to be recognized in Paris, and we're just excited for you. And we are the Carson Women's Club here.
Yes.
We can stand up again, ladies. Stand up, wave your flags. Come on, stand up.
The official hostess for the city of Carson.
We are so proud of what's happening, and the thing that I'm so proud of, and not to put the men down, I'm so proud that we have two women on our city council, our mayor and our city councilwoman. And the other guys, good for you. You're wonderful. Um, it's wonderful, because things are getting to be so positive, and I want to continue positivity in our city and in our country. Exciting things are happening in our country, and I'm all fired up, ready to go.
Fired up and ready to go.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. To, uh, the, my issue and, uh, am I ready with my certificates? Or, I know, but who's supposed to hand them to me? Thank you. Let's, uh, go down front, everyone. Oh, Raven is not here. Yeah, what you need, oh, my, mic. You didn't come up to speak, okay. One at a time, okay. Just so I can call him up one at a time. I know, so when he should move, come up and hand it to them. LA 28, a proclamation recognizing the establishment of the city of Carson, LA 28 Planning Committee. And because this is a joint effort, I'm gonna ask each one of my colleagues, I'm not gonna let ev- I'm not gonna read everything. I'm gonna ask each one of my colleagues to read two whereas's. Two.
Thank you very much. This is a proclamation recognizing the establishment of the city of Carson's LA 28 Planning Committee. Whereas the city of Carson has been bestowed the honor of being a venue city for the prestigious LA 28 Olympic and Paralympic Games, a testament to its vibrant community and commitment to excellence in sports and culture. And whereas the formation of the city of Carson's LA 28 Planning Committee marks a historic movement as it brings together the Carson Citizens Cultural Arts Foundation, the Philippine Independence Day Foundation, the Samoan Heritage Planning Committee, and the esteemed Carson Women's Club. Each with a rich history of promoting cultural diversity and unity through their respective missions. Next? Next, Cedric.
Whereas Carson's Women's Club, with a legacy spanning over five decades, has been a cornerstone in fostering community spirit and empowering through its dedication to educational initiatives and philanthropy endeavors, notable awarding scholarships to the youth of Carson, thereby investing in the future leaders of our community. And whereas, the Carson Citizens Cultural Arts Foundation, established to enrich the community through the promotion of the arts, has been a beacon of cultural engagement, fostering and appreciation for the creation arts within Carson and beyond.
MPT?
Whereas the Philippine Independence Day Foundation rooted in the celebration of Philippine sovereignty and the spirit of freedom, has been instrumental in preserving and sharing the rich history and traditions of the Filipino community. And whereas, the Samoan Heritage Samo- Samoan Heritage Planning Committee dedicated to the preservation and promotion of Samoan culture has been a pillar in maintaining cultural heritage and providing educational resources that highlight the significance of Samoan history and
And whereas, these esteemed organizations will serve as pioneers for the LA 28 Games in the city of Carson. Their collective ideas and initiatives setting a precedent for future events. Embodding the spirit of innovation and collaboration that is essential for such a historic undertaking. And whereas, the LA 28 Planning Committee is charged with the monumental task of ensuring that the games not only showcase the athletic powers, prowess of competitors from around the world, but also reflect the culture tapestry that is unique to the city of Carson. Creating a legacy that will resonate for generations to come.
And whereas, the collaborative efforts of the LA 28 Planning Committee will forge a path of inclusivity, creativity, ensuring that the games are a celebration of human potential and a reflection of the global community. And whereas, the city of Carson through the LA 28 Planning Committee will exemplify the ideals of unity, excellence, and cultural diversity. Setting a standard for how major international events, events can be cataly- catalytic for community development and international goodwill. Now therefore be proclaimed that the city of Carson's LA 28 Planning Committee is hereby established. With the mandate to plan and execute an Olympic and paraplegic experience that is unparalleled in its engagement of diverse cultures, its celebration of athletic achievement, and its lasting impact on the community and the world at large. It's attested today by all of us on the city council, your mayor Lula Davis Holmes, our mayor Pro Tem Jawan Hilton, councilman Dear, councilman Cedric Hicks Senior, and our councilwoman Arlene B. Rojas. You are officially established. And the one thing we left off was our youth. They are part of this also, okay, because I think it's important for us to engage the youth, and so, and we will be involving the youth, and our chamber that's sitting over here, this evening, our Chamber of Commerce. You're here in support. So, uh, thank you very much, and now I'm gonna call up each organization one at a time and present you, bring your members with you. This is the LA 28 Planning Committee. The same one? Okay, well, come on down, Carson Citizens Cultural Arts Foundation. And let's scoot down just a little bit, to our left, to the left, to the left, to the left, to the left. Carson Citizens Cultural Arts Foundation, under the leadership of nine of Let's surround everybody. Let's mine out, let's Elizabeth, tell us where to go. Are we good?
We're good.
Almost, almost. You guys gotta, just fill, you see the space here? Come up, come up, come up. Madam Mayor, you come up here, come up here. Yeah, that would be nice, thank you. You just come here. I think it's fine, it's fine, we can get everybody. It's fine, don't worry about it, they can come right here. No, you guys are fine, you guys are fine, we're gonna have them in front.
I just told my people they could go.
Move forward, Juanita.
Come forward, Juanita.
Juanita, move. Come out, Juanita, come out.
Can you see us all? 'Cause we can go into the lobby if we can.
Let's go into the lobby.
Well, wait, before you go out.
Oh, yes.
Okay, before you go. All right, this is, this is, um, a declaration that CCCAF Yeah, give me the mic. Thank you. Uh, this is a declaration that CCCAF has put together. I, I left it wrapped because it's so beautifully wrapped, representing our flag, the United States of America, so I wanted you to get a picture of that, and then we're gonna tear the wrapping off, because I do want you to see what's under the wrapping, so, I wanted to do that first before we go to the lobby. And now, Mayor, if you will unwrap this. Give me a minute, give me, give me a minute, thank you. Hold the mic for me, girl, I'm gonna give you my back just so that I can read this. It says, Citizen, Carson Citizens Cultural Arts Foundation presents this certificate of leadership to Mayor Lula Davis Holmes. This certificate is presented to Mayor Lula Davis Holmes for her strong, tenacious, passionate leadership that continues to elevate the city of Carson and its residents to greater heights. Her leadership has made it possible for Carson to get recognition for co-hosting the 2028 Los Angeles Olympic Games. We recognize Mayor Lula Davis Holmes, Carson City Council, and all the delegates traveling to Paris for the 2024 Olympic Games for the passing of the torch. Our prayers are with you for safe travel and success in your journey. CCCAF thanks you and support you in this and all that will be accomplished in this endeavor. Again, from the members of the Carson Citizens Cultural Arts Foundation, thank you.
Get your window, find your window, everyone. I think we need to go outside so we can see everybody.
Well, hold on, because it's televised. Yes, let's do this one.
There it is. Sit down on the thing, girl.
Everybody, good, thank you.
So you get your proclamation? Uh, Diane?
Carson Women's Club. Carson Women's Club. Carson Women's Club, the official hosts of the city. Come on in and fill in, come on in. Right there on that armrest. Sit on the armrest so we can get you all in. June? Where's June? Are we ready?
Turn around, look at the camera.
Thank you.
Thank you.
President, you're representing, here's your The president, thank you. I'll be careful, I have to come back, I have to be careful, yes. Our vice president? Thank you. Our vice president? How are you? You just not getting here? Oh, okay, oh, do you, you, yeah, you get to proclamation. Thank you. Thank you, the Philippine Independence Day Foundation. Yeah, Philippine Independence Day Foundation. We're done. You guys take a picture out front. I'm gonna bring the chamber up, do we have an extra one for the chamber? Thank you, come on over here, ladies, gentlemen, surround us, Mr. President. Surround me with How are you, how are you? You tired?
Ladies, ladies, come, come up front. Yeah, there you go.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, good seeing you, thank you. You have, you have, where's the mic?
So, uh, Mayor and city council, the Philippine Independence Day Foundation Incorporated, or PIDF, proudly present the certificate of appreciation to Mayor Lula Davis Holmes and the entire Carson, California City Council. We sincerely thank you for your dedication, unwavering support, and tireless efforts towards bringing the 2028 Los Angeles Olympics, in particular, at the very least, cycling track, hockey, rugby sevens, and tennis to the city of Carson, California. The PIDF Board of Trustees share the excitement of our local Carson community in welcoming LA 28 Olympic Games to our home in Carson, which underscores Carson commu- Carson's commitment to excellence and our community's vibrant spirit. Thank you so much, we really truly do appreciate this, Mayor.
Thank you.
Isn't she supposed to be in the picture, excuse me?
Thank you, thank you so much, Mayor.
Richard, Richard, Richard Bis.
I want a picture with Richard. Give me my son, wait a second. Let's take a picture with Richard. Shit's right there.
Well, I'm bacteria, ran out of batteries.
All right, take it on with you.
Young people, that's your young people.
Yeah, this is good, he can take it.
Okay.
We got it, we got it.
African American.
Thank you.
African American empowerment coalition.
Girl, get over here. They can get any youth, yes, I did. Where's the rest of them? They gone, I had told them, I didn't know we were gonna do pictures at the end.
Come on, let's get it while you go.
Chamber.
Carson Chamber. Did I miss anyone that's here tonight?
No, that's it, let's go. Here I am.
All right. Let's get in that picture.
No need to talk.
No need to talk, no need to talk.
Come on. Okay. We take it in here. Yeah. Come on. No, no, we're good, we're good.
Pretty good, always, always first.
That's it. Where's our photographer? Oh, Elizabeth. Did you get a picture of all these balloons?
I did. Oh, yeah. Let me give it, drop the microphone.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, all communications for matters listed on the agenda.
Uh, where do I begin? We have a couple for the public hearing, and then we have three, four general non-agenda.
Three, four?
Non-agenda.
Non-agenda.
Non-agenda, non-Olympics.
Okay. Uh, let's hear from the non-agenda, they have three minutes.
Okay, Mr. Leslie.
I'm not gonna try to follow Claudia's presentation. With that said again, but again, I wanted to thank the city attorney for, once again, for her effort and whatnot, working so deeply for the SB9 and other thing that she has done. And I have to say ditto to so many people who had gave you the recognition presentation, Madam Mayor. I can remember clearly when you got ready to start to run for this office, we, over at Leapwood, when you told me, say, Robert, if you support me and be on my side, I will make sure that I work for the welfare and the benefit of this city. And I have to say this sincerely, that I have nothing but a positive response to that. You have been really sincere in your comment and your efforts that you've given to this city. And again, like I said, I really thank you very much for your service that you've given. And again, I hope that your trip to Paris be outstanding, well-taken, because it's gonna be for the welfare of the city. And I just know that you don't have to ask for nobody else's money, or have to have a, just amazing, they're talking about, you have to be conscious of the money that you're gonna get. You'll be in Paris and back before, real quick. But anyway, just keep on doing what you have to do. You're doing well, and keep your eyes on the prize. Real quick, as I used the presentation once before when I was here, making sure that I addressed the body and making certain that people be conscious of the local and the national elections coming up. I say this so sincerely and so profoundly, people still ask me about this Project 2025. When I first spoke about it some few weeks ago, it wasn't that well stated. But it is so profound that we have to be conscious of what this Project 2025 is gonna do collectively to this whole body of the nation here, if we're not conscious of it. Because it's not only what the bad thing they're gonna do, it's the totality what they wanna do. So with that, hopefully that people get a chance to understand and learn more about what's happening with this project or this proposal that they're trying to impose upon ourselves as citizens here. We're gonna try to have a meeting on it and go over and make sure that people have a collective conscious awareness about what this thing can do to you. So I say to, as I leave out of here, you got to be involved. You can't steal second with your foot still on first.
Madam Mayor, that's three minutes.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Leslie.
Um, next is June. Yes, Aglepe. The one and only June.
It's August now. Okay, there's a few folks who actually got the joke. Good evening, my name is June Aglepe with the Office of State Assembly, Member Mike Gibson. Just three things in less than three minutes. First and foremost, I'd like, on behalf of the office, would like to thank Councilman Hicks for his partnership on last month's expungement. We definitely assist a lot of folks who were there, and also some of the departments were there also too in representation as vendors, so kudos to that one, one. Second, Assemblymember Mike Gibson is hosting a fatherhood conference this Saturday, and this is a reminder, at the Cal State Dominguez Hills, August 10th, from 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM. For more information and contact, and also to be part of this fatherhood conference, please contact via email, mark.fuentes@asm.ca.gov. And finally, also my third and final one to end the evening, let me just say this to the rest of the council, bonsoir, mercy beaucoup, and of course, bonsoir Carson. In translation, good evening to Carson, and thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you. I'm taking you with me.
And, Madam Mayor, our last non-agenda comment card is Kimberly Cortado. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council staff, Kim Cortado, Parks and Recreation Commissioner, just here to give you updates. Tomorrow, there is a senior resource fair going on at the Carson Event Center from 9:00 AM to 11:00. There will be a bunch of resources out there for seniors to get information on, I will be there. Also, flag football and soccer signups are until August 17th. For 2024, there is some new programs for football soccer. Girls' soccer is now also available for 1A, 2A, and 3A, as well as girls' flag football available in girls' 3A. As always, registration and uniforms are free to Carson residents.
What did she say? Uniformed and registration fees?
For Carson residents.
Okay, we need to clarify that. Sports registration fees are free. The uniforms is for, if you qualify as a needy family and you volunteer to work in the snack bar.
Okay.
Okay, so it's not across-the-board free?
I'll put that note.
Registration fee is across-the-board.
But uniforms is on volunteer basis?
The park staff, it's based upon need, and the park staff will identify the families that need, and the caveat is they have to come volunteer at the park.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, Madam Mayor. Also coming up, I was remiss last council meeting to not mention this, and that is on Saturday, August 24th, is our Fan Fest at Stevenson Park from 12:00 to 6:00. So please come out and join us for that. Also coming up on Saturday, September 7th, is our Cajun and Blues White Lennon Event. That is a ticketed event. Tickets are $65 from 5:30 to 11:00. Also coming up, September 11th, is Heroes Day at the Carson Event Center, and that starts at 6:00. Also, Country Western Fair on Friday, September, why does that say Friday? On September 13th from 5:30 to 9:00. Also, Mariachi Festival at Carson Event Center on September 27th from 6:00 to 10:00. So that's for the next couple months of events that are coming up, and I will come back next council meeting and mention more. Thank you, and have a great evening. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you, thank you.
Madam Mayor, that concludes comment cards that I have.
That concludes comments cards, and what do we have next on this agenda?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Are you ready for the minutes?
Yes, four minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the City Council Successor Agency and Housing Authority Meeting Minutes for July 16, 2024.
Second.
Newly and properly second, any comments?
Yes.
Please cast your vote.
And Madam Mayor, I'll make the motion for item 12 as well, is also minutes, and these are backlog of City Council Successor Agency Housing Authority Meeting Minutes. That's my motion.
Second.
Madam Clerk, is she cleaning her mouth?
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome, Madam Mayor. Six ones right there. Madam Mayor, that's unanimous.
Okay, next is approval of the consent calendar items 13 through 33. I'll entertain...
Move approval of the consent calendar, Madam Mayor.
Been moved, is it properly second?
Second, I like it.
Madam, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and just to, for notification, item number 25 is an amended item. Ironically, this is part of the issues we've been having with Granicus, and in that consideration of approval for this contract is a Microsoft software license. But in the process of that, there was issues through Granicus that we had, so we had to do some adjustments because it wasn't receiving the information properly. And that happened on another item that we'll move forward to on item 35, but that's discussion. But just wanted to make this note here for the record.
Were there any major changes that we need to pull it and discuss it?
Not major changes, it's kind of substantive because of the wording and things of that nature, but nothing that affects the actual action of the item.
It's been moved and properly second to approve the consent calendar with amended item number 25. Would you like, who would like to pull an item?
I just wanna pull item 19.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Anyone else?
22.
22, Councilman Hicks.
There's two more, but, you don't have to find another one, Senator. I know, I don't, okay.
Uh, the consent calendar is approved with the exception of item 19 and 22, and then amended item 25. Cast your vote.
The vote is unanimous, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I'm gonna take the liberty of the chair to move to our special order today, I know we have guests, and then we'll come back to the items 19 and 22. Item, is it item 33?
35.
35, I had.
34?
34, it's a special, a public hearing to consider introduction and first reading of an uncodified ordinance of the Carson City, of Carson, California, adopting mitigated negative declaration and mitigation, mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program with respect to approval of development agreement number 3222, Mr. City Manager.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Wait a second, to our city clerk, was it properly noticed and posted?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The notice of public hearing has been given pursuant to the applicable law, including but not limited to the proof of timely publication received by the city clerk. The notice of applicants via, why is everything crossed out? Telephone was confirmed by staff. The agenda posting requirements were met, excuse me, the posting affidavits are on file in my office, we did not previously receive any written communication for this item, however, we did receive two letters at the beginning of this meeting, and there are two, uh, three comment cards for this item as well.
Three comment cards. Staff, you have a report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, this item before used the public hearing to consider introduction and first reading of an uncodified ordinance of the city of Carson in relation to approving development agreement and between the city of Carson and Avacet Energy Storage LLC for a proposed battery energy storage system, project at 23320 Alameda Street, and for the city council's consideration. At this time, we'll have an update and brief presentation by our community development director, Mr. Said Nasay.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. This project was unanimously approved by the planning commission in July. The commission approved the DOR and the CUP related to this project to allow construction of a battery storage system, short for BES, we call it, and all the related infrastructure. The commission also unanimously recommended city council to approve the development agreement and adopt a mitigated negative declaration. The planning commission's approvals are not final and effective until the council takes action tonight. This slide shows the surrounding areas and the surrounding zoning for the property. It's a heavy industrial area, and some of the uses around it are refineries, tank farms, container storage, and the hydrogen facility. And it's adjacent to the Dominguez Channel as well. as well. This slide shows the view of the current site from Alameda. The current operations are concrete and asphalt crushing and shipping and receiving operations. The applicant is proposing battery enclosures similar to the one that's pictured here, and this is the layout of the site. I believe there are 220 battery cabinets proposed on the site. The site will have a 10-foot-high concrete wall surrounding, on the property line, basically. And then also, there's a driveway that's 26 feet wide that goes like a loop around the property. And the other components of the project onsite are, is a substation, operation maintenance area, and a retention basin. This is aerial view of the site and the battery, batteries. There's also a component that's offsite for this project that's depicted in this slide as the purple dotted line and the yellow and black dotted line. Those are transmission lines, and the purple one would be overhead, and the yellow and black one will go underground. And the jurisdictions shown on the picture are city of Carson, city of LA, and Long Beach. On the project site, there's a 75-foot pole, basically, that's used to, for the wires. And as soon as it crosses the Dominguez Channel, it becomes 175-foot-high structure. And there are only two of these 175-foot structures. One is immediately adjacent to the channel, and the other one is where the purple dots end. City staff has been working with LA County Fire to ensure that this is operated as a safe site, and we've added protections in the project design and the conditions of approval to ensure the safety of the site. The first measure is a 25-foot setback along Alameda, and batteries, enclosures themselves are equipped with internal fail-safe heat and gas detection alarm systems. We've discussed the batteries in detail with the fire department and their experts in looking at these type of facilities, and they've provided a lot of insight to us. One of the requirements of the fire department was a reinforced 10-foot-tall perimeter concrete wall that will be, it's basically a containment wall in case of any issues. And if the batteries get old and they need to be disposed of, they're required to, applicant is required to do so. The project will also require additional approvals from the fire department to ensure. So the document that the fire department will review and approve is called Alternate Materials and Methods Review, short for AMMR. And the approval of the AMMR may result in slight modifications to the site plan, which city will review and approve before the project can move forward. The development agreement that's before you tonight includes a battery fee, which is essentially a sales tax on the purchase of the batteries. The applicant is required to deposit $100,000 within 30 days of effective date of the DA, and they will, the minimum total amount of the battery fee is $3,067,400. And so if you take $100,000 off of that, the balance is required to be posted by a bond to ensure the city gets paid while the project is being completed. The negative mitigated declaration that's before you tonight, it was sent to public review. We received two comment letters from California Fish and Wildlife and County of LA Fire Department. We've prepared an errata sheet to the final mitigated declaration. The errata sheet didn't change anything on the conclusion of the mitigated negative declaration, and no recirculation was required. There were potential impacts, significant impacts found in the MND, but they were all mitigated to insignificant impacts. That concludes staff's report, and we have the applicant team present, Mr. John Mieke. That was close, I guess.
Yes.
And we also have our CCO consultants here, as well as the planner for the project, McKenna Alexander, who worked diligently on this project.
Before I open the public hearing, I want to see if staff has any, I mean, council have any comments before we open the public hearing.
I do as well.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did have some questions. Said, that was a very good report that you gave. My question is, I don't know who could answer this, but with the fire department going out and looking at the area and knowing that you're dealing with the batteries, my concern is foam and utilization in the event that there may be a fire or something happens. How does that liquid will be used as far as getting off the property versus going into our sewer drain? Because remember, we had a fire on the north end, which actually messed up the Dominguez Channel. Right now, this is going to be right next to the Dominguez Channel. So makes it a little bit more tricky, and I just wanted to make sure what plans are in place to address that.
The fire department will be happy to provide some insight on that.
Okay.
Are they here?
Yeah. Oh. They're in the back.
They're ready to speak if need be.
Thank you. Richard Stillwagon, the Fire Marshal for County of Los Angeles Fire Department. This was one of the things we took into consideration, and with battery energy storage systems, we actually don't utilize those types of products to extinguish the fires. So really, what we're doing is a defensive operation to keep fires from spreading to neighboring or adjoining units, and to keep the site safe. And so just keep it contained within the site. So we won't be using any types of foams, or chemicals, or anything to suppress these fires.
That's good. I'm just trying to remember some things that I went through. When the battery actually catches on fire, is that the ones where you just let it burn till it burns itself out? That's the process?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And that's why we limit their quantity in groupings, small groupings, to where they can only burn up two at a time.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilman Deere?
Yeah, thank you. This is to staff and possibly to the company building the facility. Our notice on your revenue screen you had up there, since there's two facilities, where are they buying their electricity?
It's a question and answer, so.
It's to the proposal. Where are you purchasing electricity for your facility?
The project connects to the SCE substation, the Hinson substation, so we're buying the electricity on the wholesale market.
From Edison Company?
Edison, yes.
Okay, so are you buying it in Long Beach, or you're buying it in Carson?
Technically, it's a point of interconnection, so it would be Long Beach.
So Long Beach will get the utility user tax?
It's a wholesale transaction. We are not a retail, there's no retail element to this at all. This is strictly a wholesale transaction.
I see, okay. That explains it, because I saw the transmission line construction that you're planning, and you're going to run that power over the, over the channel.
Yep. And to answer Councilmember Hicks's question about the drainage plan, the drainage plan is specifically designed to prevent water from going towards the channel. We recognize that in conversations with McKenna, that the city is, I'll say, sensitive to the channel and any discharges, so all water will discharge out towards Alameda.
And they have a retention basin in your plan as well?
Yes, additionally.
So that'll catch the excess water?
Correct. That's the plan.
That's all the questions I have. They, that explained it.
Thank you. To staff, I was concerned about the point of sale, so the facility will be here, but the revenue will go to Long Beach. Sales tax.
So it's wholesale?
It's wholesale.
No sales tax.
This is strictly on a wholesale market operation.
Okay, okay.
So the batteries, the battery units themselves will have a point of sale on the physical site, which will enable the battery fee.
My other question is, will we be able to reuse any of this energy from this battery storage, Carson?
The Hinson substation supplies a fairly large amount of the Carson area in terms of the electrical energy that's used. So yes, you would, you would use this energy.
Okay, I heard otherwise. I just wanted to hear from you.
Yeah, it's.
Okay. Thank you, Said. Any other further questions? We're going to open the public hearing. If the applicant want to do a presentation, we'll entertain your presentation.
Okay, thank you. Guess there's a slide deck someplace. If there's not, I can just talk.
While you're waiting, could you give us some background on your company when you do your presentation?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
I can go without it. I can go without it if I need to.
I apologize, the applicant's PowerPoint was deleted by mistake, and that's my fault. I thought that was an extra PowerPoint.
No worries. Actually, if we could bring up yours again?
Sure.
That would be helpful. And just if we can bring up the high-level plan of the site.
This one?
I, oh, don't worry about it, it's fine.
Oh, it's switching.
Trying to pull up that slide. To the staff, all of you, you know, we heard a lot of accolades about the council, myself, but this was a team effort, you know, and I want to thank you all, Mr. City Manager, Tariq, everybody that was involved in the planning and making sure the LA 28 games got, in Carson, got their proper recognition. So I know council, you know, we was here, and the mayor did this, but you guys are, you know, and I just want to thank you, because you work around the clock to make sure that we set policy and you implement. And a lot of people don't understand that. You implement the policies that we set on this disk. And I just want to say thank you and for working around the clock and meeting. I know I was in some of the meetings, but I wasn't in all of them. Let's be clear. But I just want to say thank you for all your hard work. All your assistant city manager, Tariq, deputy director, you, Mr. City Manager, thank you so much.
Well, thank you. My name is John Mieke. I'm representing the Avacet Energy Storage Project in this wonderful city of Carson. Thank you, Mayor Holmes, and the esteemed members of the council. So the Avacet Energy Storage Project, as was noted, is going to go across the Dominguez Channel, go across the Inmateville Facility, and then run north up to the Hinson Substation, where it'll connect into the SCE facility there. This project, as I noted before, is a wholesale transaction with the grid, so we are actually selling the energy to Southern, excuse me, San Diego Clean Power is the off-taker for the power, and we are offering significant benefits to the grid. This project should be done in the middle of 2026, so you'll have a clean energy project for the Olympics. So we're all excited about that as we move forward. It offers tremendous benefits to the city in terms of the actual sales tax on, you know, when the system's installed, when the property tax as the system moves forward, and also as, in terms of labor and the people who are installing it and constructing the project as we move forward. And the company who ultimately owns the project is called Arivon. Arivon is an independent power producer. We provide significant solar, wind, and battery energy storage projects throughout the state of California and all through the western United States to power, you know, a good portion of the population. I guess that pretty much concludes my initial remarks. Without the presentation, I'm a little more challenged on what, on what to say. So I appreciate your time and thank you so much. If you have any questions, certainly.
May I have a few questions when you're ready?
Good morning, Madam City.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. As I mentioned before, we received three comment cards, as well as two written documents at the start of the meeting. So if it is your pleasure, I can call them.
Please.
Eddie Alvarez?
Yes. Hi, Mr. Alvarez.
Hello. Good evening, Madam Mayor. This is Council. My name is Eddie Alvarez. I'm the council representative through LA Orange County Building and Construction Trades Council. We are, we're the ones not only building this project, but we build many projects around the both counties. We represent over 150,000 construction workers that are both skilled and best-trained construction workers in all of America, in our opinion. And usually, we are behind this project 100%. This will be union-built with local, with local labor, as we love to say. Not only that, but I also, as a good news app, you will all be taking part of the Olympics. The Olympics is being built with union skilled and trained workers, which we are very, very proud of. We are investing ourselves quite a bit to make sure that these projects are done on time, under budget, right? And so we put on our best for the LA 28. But on this project here, we're very, very excited with clean energy. You know, we don't call it transition of jobs. We call it following our work, right? Our people are trained to do what we do, what we do, and that is build, right? May it be a battery storage project, may it be a pipeline, either hydrogen or fossil fuel or water. We build the best, and we follow our work wherever that leads us throughout the, throughout the country and through the community. So we are very, very proud to be a part of this project and other projects around our country, and we hope as we get the next couple of votes that this goes, yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, and I want to key on what you said. Local hire, local.
Ma'am, we, I am very proud that our apprenticeship readiness fund, our nonprofit that we are a big part of, I got some new numbers today. Well, not today, but again, we are, we have put in, since we started the fund, 1,700 people from disadvantaged communities to work. We're talking second, third, fourth chance folks. 92% are of color. 20% are women. The national average for women is 2%, right? Our LA Metro, which, our LA Metro expansion and Lawar expansion are very, very hop on that. We just met with LA Metro to renew our project labor agreement to make sure that we are meeting those requirements and those goals. And this, for us, isn't, you know, just some, you know, goal that we put in a PLA or a community workforce agreement that walk away. We are very dead set on making sure that the people who are building our projects are looking like the people who live in the neighborhoods that we're building them for. So I want to be very set at that.
Any more public comment?
Yes, Madam- Yes, Madam Mayor, there's two more. Ms. Lena, I have a comment card and written statement. So it's one or the other. Would you like, if that's okay, Madam Mayor, if I ask her if she wants to speak?
Yes, that's fine.
You're speaking for Ms. Whitaker? Okay, Madam Mayor, Michael Stewart.
He's speaking for Ms. Whitaker? He's speaking for you? Wow, that's unusual. You see her hands on her hips?
I did.
Wow. Never known anybody to speak for you.
Okay. There you go.
I love that 20%. I love that 20%. Lena Whitaker, I live in the lovely city of Carson. I've been a resident for several years. And I, I did send a, two correspondence, the, two letters as a resident and also as a member of the Carson Chamber. However, I was perusing our Carson Report and Community Services. And I was looking at our esteemed city managers, Mr. David C. Roberts Jr., his letter to the Carson residents. And it struck me, oh my stars, that's my saying, by the way, oh my stars. His portion down here of looking forward is so appropriate describing this community, this particular project. So let me read that section of looking forward that Mr. David Roberts Jr. has written to we, the Carson residents. "As we move forward, our focus remains on enhancing the quality of life for all Carson residents. This summer, we will continue to invest in our community's infrastructure, parks, and services, ensuring that our city not only grows but thrives. Our efforts are aimed at creating a Carson that is vibrant, inclusive, and resilient." Here we go. "Ready to meet the challenges of today and tomorrow." And this project is such a project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Stewart?
Yeah. You know, I'm happy to be here. I enjoy the celebration, the celebratory celebration of us being recognized for the Olympics. We've been pushing for the Olympics. I was, I was a younger man in 1984 when I was working for Tom Bradley's CEO's office. And we had to go and take our vacation time individuals. And we took our vacation and we worked on our vacation time on the Olympics. So we can't get that check, we had to go on vacation. But we were happy to donate that because he needed trained staff to work with it. And we did that. I'm here to say that I'm happy to be here this evening, this mayor, and city council, and staff. I strongly support the Avacet Energy Project because this $350 million project is a win-win-win-win project for our Carson community. When, the Carson Chamber of Commerce defines economic development as a concerted effort on the part of all of us, the city, the county government, development corporations such as Arivon, to the business community local, community residents, the church community, and academic community. All of us working together has to work together to influence the direction of private sector investment opportunities that can lead to sustained economic growth for this vibrant Carson community. When, we seek to promote catalytic development projects that spark, that ignite sustained economic growth. And this is that example. When, this project provides 200 megawatt and 800-hour battery storage on a 6.96-acre site at 23320 Alameda Street. I went over there and looked at it. It needs improvement over there, and that's coming in with this investment. This project will bring in $35 million of property tax revenues over the course of this project. And also will provide between 70 and 100 high-paying union jobs. And also, we're gonna support the city's initiative, especially the initiative of Mayor Lula Davis-Homes for the Clean Energy Hub Initiative while creating these great jobs. All we can say, this project is an example of showcasing Carson. And let's do this. I'm just here to showcase Carson, and that's what we're trying to do, to support the council and your staff. We support your, your planning staff. We support your planning commission's report. And we also say this to you. We look forward to moving forward and growing with this community. Showcase Carson. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that concludes the comment cards for the public hearing.
The applicant, do you have anything else to add? You're good? Staff, any closing comments?
If I may, just briefly, Madam Mayor, I'm so excited to have Avacet here, being presented before you as a council this evening. But I'd be remiss if I at least didn't mention one I wanted to thank again, our community development director, Mr. Said Naseh, for his tremendous work on this project. But also, more so, that's been on this project for the last couple of years is Ms. Makina Alexander. She did a fantastic job working with Avacet. So just wanted to shout her out and thank her for the tremendous effort that she put in and has stuck forward with this project and had it move forward. So just wanted to make mention of that.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. That's what good staff does. Any, that was our closing comments for staff. We're gonna close the public hearing. Council deliberation?
Madam, Madam Mayor, I will move, we approve staff recommendation by introducing for first reading, by title only and with full reading wave, ordinance number 42-4212, entitled, "An Uncodified Ordinance of the City of Carson, California, One, Adopting Mitigated Negative Declaration and Mitigation Monitoring and Reporting Program With Respect to Approval of Development Agreement Number 32-22. And, Two, Approving Development Agreement Number 32-22 Between the City of Carson and Avacet Energy Storage LLC For A Proposed Battery Energy Storage System, AKA BESS, B-E-S-S, Project At 23320 Alameda Street. And Assessor Parcel Number 3715-020-022."
Second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any more deliberation?
Oh, I just wanted to add my comments to it. Excited about workers coming for the union, excited to have this cutting-edge technology come to our community as well. And as the staff, again, thanks Said, and as our city manager, thank the planner that was on it. I, I just want to, again, through the city manager, highlight again Makina, all while achieving, because at the same time, this year, she achieved her master's degree from USC from Price School of Public Policy. So we wanted to appreciate you all at the same time. Just wanted to shout you out, handling the load at the same time, working in the day, going to school at night, and on the weekends. So just wanted to give you your kudos and still move the city forward at the same time. So I'm, I'm gonna vote.
Makina say, that's what women do. Catch your vote.
It's unanimous, Madam Mayor.
We're gonna go back to the consent calendar, item number 19, Mayor Portman.
Madam Mayor, I only pulled item number 19 so we could just say it's not live. So we could just say there's no council meeting on, on the 19th. I just wanted to make sure the residents was aware. And they knew about it. So we don't have to have a whole lot of discussion. We can move on. I just wanted to make sure the residents knew we weren't gonna get together on the third Tuesday in August. We will be off. We will be dark.
All right, so we'll see you in September. So it's to move staff's recommendation. What was the item? What did it say?
What number was it?
It was a consent item.
Yes, consent.
Okay. Item number 22, Councilman Hicks.
Madam Mayor, it's a, it's an action item. You need to, there needs to be a motion for it.
You made a motion, second?
I'm making a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
What was the motion?
Motion that we, staff recommendation.
Okay, I have a question to our city attorney. Where is she? I always like to err on, thank you for pulling that, side of precaution, but I discussed this with you, even though we're gonna be dark. Could we continue, I don't foresee anything coming up, this meeting until, to a date specific, so I don't have to call a special meeting or... Where is she?
Well, yeah, well, I think it would be better served if the attorney answers that. But to my understanding, we can continue an item, Madam Mayor. However...
To a specific date?
It'd be continued to a specific date, but if there was an item that came up or that you wanted to bring up to and hold a meeting, it would have to be a special, it would have to be a special meeting. But I'll allow the...
Before to our city attorney?
City attorney will answer that.
I have a question for you, Sunny.
I, she was indisposed.
I, I had to ask this question before because I know certain things can't be presented at a special meeting. And if there's something that comes up that we need to act on, could I continue this meeting to a date unspecific so that we don't have to have, call a special meeting?
Yes, you can adjourn the regular meeting to a date, but you have to pick the date.
I have to pick a date?
Yes.
Okay, why don't we, we're not gonna meet, but I don't know what, there's so much going on in the city. And so I want to adjourn this to what would be our second meeting in...
You could always pick a date and then staff can cancel it.
Right, that's what I'm saying. Because it won't be a special meeting that way. It'll be a regular meeting. We'll just adjourn this meeting to the, is the 19th? What they, what would be the second meeting?
The third Tuesday would be the 20th, Madam Mayor.
The 20th, so I'd like to adjourn this meeting to the 20th. And if there's no need for a meeting, we just, the staff will cancel it. Is that okay with the staff?
Then we don't, we don't need this item on the agenda.
Well...
What was the question?
It's an item on the agenda to not have a meeting on the 20th. Now we're gonna have a meeting on the 20th.
No, no, you're not. This meeting is being adjourned to the 19th. So there is no meeting. We just, if something comes up. Otherwise, we won't have to meet.
It'd be the same meeting as tonight.
As tonight.
As tonight. You said the 19th. Is it the 19th or the 20th?
They said 20th.
20th, okay.
It's the 20th or the 19th?
It's item 19, but it's on the 20th.
And if we don't have anything, staff will just cancel it, this meeting.
So I have a question. If it's canceled by staff, it automatically terminates the meeting? It's adjourned? What is the law on that?
Well, no, they can't, they would have to technically show up and then say there's no quorum. But out of courtesy, they could post agendas that say there will not be a meeting, council will not be attending. However, Councilman Deere is correct, staff would probably have to show up just in case any member of the public comes, and they would have to say there's no quorum, the meeting's not happening. But they can post agenda items saying the adjourned meeting is not happening. There's no items to consider.
Yeah, I, I just don't want to get caught where we have to do something that has to take place, that we cannot do at a special meeting. I don't know what that would be. Yeah, we have. And I, I would have to show up? Do I need to show up, do I?
No, you don't have to. I mean, if there is three council members, the meeting can proceed. If there, you don't have three council members, you don't have quorum to have a meeting.
Okay.
Also, Madam Mayor, keep in mind, this meeting, because we're already having the issues technically, and we're gonna have this new system being implemented. That's why we were gonna have the first meeting in September over in the community center. Council chambers won't be available on the 20th for this, of this month because they'll be doing the construction. So we would have, if we were going to continue it, we would have to continue the meeting and have it to be held potentially at the community center to a certain extent. And I don't know if there's any construction or anything like that happening at the community center, but but that's, that would be the, that would be the location we'd have to utilize if, if indeed the meeting goes to happen.
Okay, well, we could just adjourn to the community center.
So, Madam Mayor, one of your questions to staff before Sunny stepped back at her spot was, do we have any pressing matters that most likely we're gonna have to take up? Why don't we ask that question again?
Do we have, that's what I'm looking for.
Go ahead.
No.
At this, at this point in time, no, staff has already prepared any staff, staff reports and issues that we see on the horizon for the first meeting of September. I think this would be more in lines of if something came up unforeseen perhaps that needed to be addressed, maybe even emergency, which then I kind of think that leads more towards either a special meeting in essence, which I know that's with the mayor, you're trying to avoid necessarily having.
Well, I'm trying to avoid us having, if there's an ordinance or something that we need to change because they cannot be, you cannot deal with them at a special meeting. That's what I'm trying to cover that base.
And any of the ordinances that we have prepared, at least that's from a staff, excuse me, from a staff perspective, is prepared for September, first meeting in September. So staff has already anticipated and knowing that we weren't potentially going to be here for the second meeting in August, is preparing any ordinances for the first meeting of September.
So, Madam Mayor, go ahead, Sunny.
I, I was just gonna say, you could just not cancel the meeting and then do the same thing. If there is no items, you can tell the public, we don't intend to be here. Most likely, it's gonna be canceled. We don't anticipate having anything. And staff can just post agendas if there's no items, 72 hours in advancing. Council will not be here. There's no items on the agenda. And then they can open the meeting and say there's no quorum and close the meeting. I mean, that...
Yeah, I, I'm just looking at all angles because I know we've, we've gotten stuck before when we couldn't put it on as a special meeting. Okay, I just want to cover the bases.
It's highly unlikely that if there's an emergency, it would be an ordinance-related emergency.
What else can't we not put at, do at a special meeting? That's about it? Okay.
Introduction or adoption of an ordinance?
At a special meeting. Okay. I'm good.
Or sending, sending a text to the voters.
I can't do that?
So we're gonna keep item 19?
We'll just keep it then because that was my big concern. I know we ran into it before about an ordinance. We were trying, you can't do it at a special meeting. Something good with the way it is, MPT, yeah.
So we're not having a meeting on the 20th? On the 20th. Yeah, the date's the 20th.
Not the 19th.
I, I first did, Cedric seconded.
Yes.
No.
Madam Mayor, thank you.
No, the meeting is canceled.
Yes, and it's unanimous.
And if you come up with something special, you're in trouble. No, thanks. I know. Report the vote, Madam Clerk. Did I vote?
It, it's unanimous.
Okay. So Hicks, you had 22?
Yes, I did. My question to staff under item number 22 in regards to animal control in the contract. I've been getting a lot of calls in relation to coyote and coyote control. Where is it in the contract that they address any of that for coyote control? Or is there anything in there in the contract?
So there's, thank you, council member. So for coyotes, we actually have the coyote tracker, which we've always had. And that's, that's separate from the LA County...
So is there a number that residents should know about? Because I know on social media, we get, get a lot of hits about coyote sighting and...
And it's posted on our, on our website, Councilman Hicks. And so I don't, I don't have it for me right this moment, but I'll make sure to give it to you. And then we can, if that's the, if that's the issue, we can have IT to highlight that on the front page of the website. So that way, because of maybe multiple sightings that have happened here recently, we can have that number available so residents can see that. And then we can put some postings out as well through social media. And then we can even put some paper flyers out, maybe at parks or whatnot, just to remind residents if they see a number of coyote or a number of coyotes, that they can make that phone call for our coyote tracker to come and take... For our coyote tracker to come and take care of that.
Thank you. Move staff recommendation?
No comments from anyone? Cash your vote.
Madam Mayor, the vote is unanimous.
Thank you. Item number thirty-five, staff, consider the classification and comp study.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, uh, at this time, we'll go through the classification and compensation study, uh, phase one recommendations, uh, for the consideration and adoption of resolution number twenty-four dash zero seven six, amend the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five budget in the general fund and special revenue uh, for discussion. At this time, we will have our Director of Human Resources, Mr. Joshua Boudreaux, to go through a brief presentation uh, in regards to the classification and compensation results from Siegel, or the Siegel Company, and the recommendations they've provided.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Hope everyone's doing well today, I love it when I'm at the end, I'm not gonna make this long, so, um, but I will try to be as thorough as I can without taking too much time. So as you know, we, uh, partnered up with the Siegel Company in regards to, uh, looking at our classification and compensation structures to date. Some of the goals we had in mind was to make sure that we had some equitability, um, compensation structures that were up to date for the, uh, two thousand twenty-four, and organizational needs and market standards were also, uh, taken into account. In regards to the utilization of the Siegel Company, um, so we started with, uh, utilizing them, I believe, in March two thousand twenty-three, and we were hoping that we would partner up and provide, where they can provide objective insights and recommendations based off the latest and greatest, uh, practices and industry standards. To that regard, uh, we made sure that, uh, our compensation structures were benchmarked against, uh, similar municipalities and organizations, promoting fairness and competitiveness. So, we'll go with, uh, slide one. So at slide one, um, let's see. Basically, what that infographic's showing is what was, uh, recommended so far, and I'll, I'll read, and I can go over that too if you can't see it that clear. Um, basically, with the consultation of Siegel, we worked closely to analyze, uh, feedback given from the employees, understand the perspectives, and incorporate insights into the study. Uh, there was a job analysis where we, uh, took on examination of job roles, responsibilities, requirements to ensure accurate classifications. Uh, these are better known as desk audits as well. Uh, in combination with that, we presented the findings to key stakeholders and incorporated their feedback as well. And, uh, implementation, so we rolled out an updated classification and compensation structures in phases, you see we're in phase one right now, um, to ensure smooth transitions. When we took that information, we then, uh, utilized, or, uh, we worked with Siegel to utilize a comparison of our compensation structures with those in similar organizations to ensure that we were competitive. And, uh, just for clarity purposes, this is to be seen as a living document, so we're continually reviewing, uh, and updating the document to address emerging needs or any discrepancies that may, uh, be there. So currently, uh, there are, there were, um, for phase one, a reclassification of eight positions, twenty-six new full-time positions, a collapse of fourteen classifications, a reward of eighty-seven classifications, and a maintain, uh, maintenance of a, or maintaining two hundred and four classification titles. And as you can see, uh, the, the amount left over for the total salary impact for these changes were already absorbed into the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, with no additional fiscal action being needed or required. Um, these are the positions that were, uh, suggested that we recommend, um, for the new staffing, I'm trying to see if I can make this larger. Oh, beautiful. Oh, thank you. So, these were also provided within, um, our agenda item as well for review. And then, so these are the new positions, we have the reclassification of positions.
Could you make that larger, I can't see, where is my? Yeah, it's not coming on.
Well, while we're doing that, I just wanted to also address, um, some of the feedback that we received, um, in regards to the project as well. I just wanna acknowledge that it's important that, we know that, that we know that, uh, there may have been some classifications or folks in specific type of classifications in this stage, that may have not, uh, completed a specific desk audit. Um, we, right now in phase one, we focus on the priority areas and roles required immediate attention, so fueled by immediate staffing concerns, and then also community needs represented by council as we've been going along, uh, the last past months. Also, um, however, since, you know, this is a working document, I wanna make sure that we know that there is ongoing, uh, opportunities to review and refine additional classifications, and employees whose roles were not reviewed, uh, initially may have positions assessed in a secret or subsequent phases of the project. So, when we talk about the market assessment, um, basically, what we did was we took, um, the, about a hundred and seven classifications that serve as benchmarks, and we compared them against, uh, relevant cities, uh, that we came across, uh, there was about ten of them, which we'll go right now, um, to which we used as comparators, so as listed, there was the city of Burbank, city of Compton, Alsgando, Gardena, Norwalk, Manhattan Beach, Redondo, Hawthorne, Inglewood, and Torrance. My background, most recently, was with, uh, one of the largest class and comp firms in California, so when I saw Compton's numbers weren't updated since two thousand eighteen, we knew that was a no-no, so we went with nine of the top cities. So within that scope, we tried to bring in a dynamic group that would, uh, show some of the South Bay, or most of the South Bay comparisons, with also bringing in some, some like Burbank and Norwalk that were more so, um, not as close regionally, but represented a lot of the same parameters that, and, and services that the city of Carson also represents. Um, within that, we saw that, so this, uh, all these numbers right here, basically what this showing is, your pay ranges from minimum to maximum and midpoint, using two statistical tools, mean and median, I like to go with median, because it controls for more of the outliers. So as you can see, with every single city, with the exception of Manhattan Beach, we are above the median, so most are trending from ten percent to twenty-seven percent. With Manhattan Beach, if you look at the mean, it crosses out, so we're pretty much at that standard deviation, so neck-to-neck with Manhattan Beach, which is very impressive, um, to have the city of Carson competing with a city like that. So, in aggregate data, so we put everything together, and put all of our classifications together, what you see is that, um, the mean, we're thirteen percent above the market, and granted, this is a snapshot right now, given what's out there as far as information provided, um, and then eighteen percent above market, um, on the median side. So that means that our, and on a median mount, so our midpoint of classifications, or benchmark classifications, are eighteen percent above all of our comparators. This also does not include benefits, but I will say, um, I was very inspired by, um, Councilmember Hicks, um, your presentation, so I actually researched, and we, um, are doing something a little different here as well, and we're utilizing a, um, a program or, uh, a service called Gov Invest. With that, what I wanted to show you all too is,
We went dark.
Oh, yeah, it's gonna come on right now. So, wi- with that said, um, when this pops up, one thing we wanna make sure, and what I'm emphasizing, is that this isn't just a document that is gonna be a snapshot and we forget about it. If folks feel like they're out of class, if folks feel their titles aren't aligned, we'd have phase two for that, but also, we also have staff that can run the desk audits with, uh, hopefully when this comes to screen.
We'll be happy to see when all the technical, audio, and visual will be repaired, so when we come back in September for the second meeting,
We hope.
This won't occur.
I'm gonna hold you to it.
That's, that's the hope.
We did that once before and came back a little worse.
Right, because we came back to the same company, this is a completely different vendor.
I'm not gonna say no names of the companies. He's trying to boot.
There we go, something popped up.
It's, it's trying.
Not on the, not on the main screen, there it is.
Okay, so, we're using a, a tool right now as well to stay in real time. What Gov Invest, it's a live compensation module, so what this does is, although we showed the numbers of, you know, thirteen, eighteen percent above market, that's not including total compensation, so here, what, uh, this allows us to do is, you can see right here on a bar graph, where we stack as far as compensation, so if I, if I minimize right here, so that y'all can see a little bit better, you can see that we're twenty-three percent above market with our compar, comparators right here. The, also, the cool part is, one of the things we wanna do too is, is create and maintain relationships with, um, all the employees here, so when we're looking at data, one of the things that, you know, comes into question sometimes is, how valid is our data, so if we go into, let's see.
Josh, while you're speaking of that, can you explain to council what total comp actually means?
Sure, so total comp, um, well, first of all, the number's about, uh, one point four-three, and that rounds up all of our benefits, so that's supplemental benefits, um, that's your medical, that's, uh, LTD, STD, or long-term disability, short-term disability, uh, dental, uh, vision, it's the total cost of the employee, not just what they see on, um, you know, LinkedIn or, 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 uh, government jobs, so it's the benefits, the total, uh, burn-in rate for the employee. So, when we, uh, when we look at, you know, if you can see here, I built out a bunch of scenarios, so if we have to, uh, we just use a, uh, accountant too. So in live time, this, this program is pulling information, which is gonna take a little bit. But what I wanna show you is, when it pulls this information, if we go, a lot of, a lot of times validity is the, kind of the, the pain point for folks, like how do we know if that's the truth? All the data links to where we pull it from, and that's the beauty of this program, and we have it for a couple of years, and we use that with the class and comp project in order to marry the two, so that we have a living document, so that we're not just doing this as a snapshot in time, but we're carrying on and reassuring equity amongst our classifications in real time, so that we don't have to wait for anyone, or have to hire a new firm all the time to do some work like this. So, hopefully this works when I exit out and go back to PowerPoint. Okay.
Josh, while you're looking for that, I'm just concerned, when I saw that last slide, it showed us in the sixth position, meaning our salaries, all the other five cities' salaries were higher than what our salaries were based upon that percentage? And that we were higher than Inglewood in their salaries for certain positions, or overall?
Sure, so, um, in Inglewood, we are, um, in, let's see, we're four percent above them on max, on, on, on the median, so that's on the top end of the salaries.
Okay.
Um, that's overall base ranges. Um, we, we're trending higher than them in, in general, and Alsgando, well, everyone except for Manhattan Beach, I'd say Manhattan Beach are neck-to-neck, but no, we're trending higher than them on our classifications.
And then, if, if I can just put a pin in, in this too, Mayor and Council, when Josh is speaking to these averages and, uh, medians and means, this is in reference to salaries, this is not even including benefits. So, when you speak to benefits of what the city of Carson employees receive, we are the only city in, really within fifteen-mile radius, that pays, that pays for medical, uh, family benefits, for all the family. Currently, um, ever since twenty thirteen, when Pepper changed, and there was various, um, tiers for PERS retirement, a lot of cities went to where it was employee-only paid, and then many of them even dropped that to where it was a percentage, which is what PERS provides at, um, and it's a dollar amount, which was a hundred and eighty dollars toward, towards your individual medical benefit. So, when you include that, uh, medical benefit alone, not inclusive of any other benefits that Josh made reference to, that's where, um, our overall compensation package, when he speaks about total compensation, that's salary and benefits, then exceeds even to that of Manhattan Beach. So this is a salary where we're almost even, but when you include the benefits, it takes us above, so just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, most definitely, and, um, if I may, from my previous role as a, a senior class and comp project manager, but also as an executive recruiter, I'm very familiar with the market around here. I would say that the total comp absolutely makes us the crown jewel, um, we are very impressive when it comes down to total competence entirety. It shows that council really cares for the employees, because there's benefits there that don't even exist for some city managers anymore. And I've done at least five city manager recruitments in the last year, yesterday was six months, so six months before, at least five throughout the state. Yeah, yesterday was six months, so, um, it, it's very impressive, it's, it's very, um, the council's very generous for what they provide for us. So, again, we are, um, in aggregate, eighteen percent above median, um, but we also wanted to talk about phase two. We're not done yet, right now, uh, I'd say that the heavy lifting is completed, however, there's a lot more of the meeting confer type of items with any type of classification changes. Um, it's gonna be a lot of cleanup, um, if you look at some of the class specs, some of them are outdated, we don't have switchboards anymore, um, so we gotta clean that up, um, make sure FLSA, FLSA is clean, uh, make sure, if we do have any type of certifications, that they're relevant and/or needed for the position, so it's gonna be a lot of that, um, hand-in-hand with the, uh, Siegel Company. But I'd say, uh, the only timely event of that is working with labor and ensuring that we're expedient when we, uh, start rolling out those classifications that are gonna be, uh, readjusted and, and all uniformed grammatically and, and uploaded correctly.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Council?
Uh, another question regarding part-time employees, how are we looking at the class and comp with our part-time employees, because I know we have a lot of part-time employees, and they're the ones that really make a lot of things move, with, along with our part-time, uh, employees as well, but, uh, I know in the past, they have always felt that they were the step, the stepkids of the city and that, really in the forefront, so what are we doing to make sure their compensation is on par as well?
Just, so, I think, if I, if I may, Councilman Hicks, so when Josh came here, um, this contract was made for and to look at classification and compensation for full-time employees, because part-timers, you know, we have both represented and unrepresented. So, you, you wouldn't utilize a classification and comp study necessarily for unrepresented part-time staff, typically what happens is we do an internal class and comp, where you may say, and, I mean, life parts are represented, but let's just, as an example, that they weren't represented, you'd look at their salary or hourly, hourly rate in comparison to two or three other cities that are neighboring to us, and that's how you would come to a generalization of what they should be paid hourly. But that wasn't inclusive in this particular, uh, project, because, one, you haven't had a true class and, classification compensation study done in the city, I believe in twenty-five, thirty years, if not ever. So, they wanted to look at full-time and get that established first, since it's the bulk of not just the salary, but primarily the salary and benefits of what is being paid for. But when we go into negotiations, which is coming up, uh, for part-timers, which is in, currently now, that's where Josh will do the negotiations, and that's where both internal and the unions kinda present and provide their, uh, interpretations of where they believe hourly-rated employees should, should be and should stand, and that's where a small internal class comp study kinda gets done. And he's, he's done that, and he'll do that, but that's separate from this particular project, it was not paid for, it was not part of the original contract when it was initiated.
Okay. But it, but it will be looked at at some point in time.
It definitely will be looked at, because it has to, because one, one section is contracted for some of those part-timers that are represented, and then the other ones that aren't, we still have to look at that, because there's other state laws that are involved, right, where hourly rate has to go up because of minimum wage.
Uh, Mr. City Manager, uh, I think you guys were looking at comparing, and we haven't received that report yet, comparing, uh, what it would cost because of compaction, uh, because, I think you've heard me said several times in this body, if McDonald's is paying twenty dollars an hour, so I know Robert is working on that, but when we do get to the, uh, part-time salaries, we need, you need to look at that and find out what it's gonna cost us, and I, I don't think it's gonna cost that much, because it's twenty dollars versus eighteen dollars, and...
Yeah, Madam Mayor, uh, if I might, we did conclude that, that, um, research last week.
Okay.
Uh, so yes, it incorporates the estimates, the estimates for the part-times at both, uh, I'll say, um, hourly rate points, uh, but then also any compactions to some of the full-time as a result. So you'll have those numbers in the next week.
Yeah, I think, uh, who's on the Personnel Subcommittee with me? I don't know, we'll find out, but I think we need to bring that to the Personnel Subcommittee, it's on a chart somewhere. And so we not, we can look at what you're presenting, like, I know I'm on there and someone else, I don't know who at the moment.
Well, the City Clerk will kinda see, or help us to find out who's on there with you, Madam Mayor, but...
Or did I eliminate it?
It's an ad hoc, but, to your point, as Dr. Lennox said, he, they just concluded, so they'll be finishing up that package and we'll have those numbers.
We've, we've discussed it a couple of times, level addressed. The councilman's concerned about, uh, the no child left behind, more or less, because a lot of the work that we can't do, our part-time staffs, is doing.
Yeah, they just, uh, Will and Finance, they just finished the numbers, um, and so they've been working with Dr. Lennox on that, and we've been trying to stay away from Josh so he can finish this portion of...
Well, this has been laying around for years, so, thank you.
But it's, it's, it's almost complete.
Thank you. MPT?
I wanna add this while we're, uh, just talking about it. Let's try to see if we can fill positions opposed to bringing in contractors to fill positions. Uh, I would love to make sure that we feel there's a lot of people who are looking for jobs opposed to giving contractors jobs. Um, I don't want that. I want some, some of our members or some of our workers, residents, some people who work here to get jobs. There's a whole bunch of people in our community looking for jobs, and these contractors who live, who live in wherever and come and take our money, uh, we don't wanna do that. Uh, you know, we don't wanna do that. So I'm all for trying to figure out how we can open up jobs, fly new positions if we have to, uh, since, um...
May I pretend we can do a, a City of Carson job fair?
Absolutely, all these contractors, get them out of here.
Hundred percent understood. Um, one thing that I'll, I'll say as well as what we're trying to do in the HR department, um, as we're building, because we're kind of in the regrowth front phase, is ensuring that we have ties with the community. So looking at not just, uh, Cal State Dominguez Hills, but also looking at trade schools as well. Um, something I've done before, uh, it, it's, it's awesome to see homegrown talent and re, uh, reutilizing employees. Uh, I can't give a specific example, but there's a specific example from one of our internship programs, uh, within the HR department where, um... Where, where this intern program's gonna turn into an employee converting. So, um, hear you loud and clear, we'll do that. I was a recruiter before, so I have no excuses, it'll get done.
Thank you, and I was, I was looking at your new staffing hires and on here, and, and what we've been talking about, I see they're on to fill these positions in, uh, like, in the maintenance and public works department and community services. So you're moving in the right, because some of these positions, we were at thirty-seven positions that were vacant, now we're at what? About, in public works, seven? Zero?
No, we're not, no, not, not as, definitely not at zero. Um, I, I, I don't know, like, percentage-wise, we're down to about seven percent, um, as far as a vacancy rate, but that's overall, Madam Mayor, I don't know what the percentage is for public works. I do know that there are some positions we're still trying to recruit for. Um, as an example, um, we're trying to find an electrician and a plumber, um, that you all approved previously, because we've been utilizing one plumber and one electrician for the last, I think, eighteen years. Um, and so to have one plumber and one electrician longer than that, um, just didn't make any sense. And so, to your point, those are some of those positions that, um, Segal has identified as, uh, for us to ensure that we fulfill, uh, as their recommendation, and so that's where we're going with.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just looking at this, uh, first item, number one, it's seven positions in public works that are being filled, so thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am, and there, and there's a, to, to that point, so, that, it was actually eight. Um, it says seven, but there's actually eight, so one of the items that was, that we needed to adjust was on this particular sheet, because again, Granicus didn't load properly, it loaded a, the incorrect document, so we had to provide you a physical copy. Um, so it's actually one additional position, which is the very first one, I think it says one account clerk versus two, it should be two, that's listed on there.
Okay, well, we're filling this.
And I think the slide, the slide shows it, but needless to say, um, it was in this present, it's in the presentation and we provided you the copies.
Uh, if I may, uh, interject, Madam Mayor, we have eleven positions that are vacant in public works. You won't have it on that sheet, I have it.
Right, not on that sheet, Madam Mayor. This is a recommendation from Segal, the question you asked was about the current pub, uh, current vacancies, so Finance has position control and they're saying there's eleven vacancies in public works.
Alright.
As opposed to, I think there's from our, uh, near twenty-five to thirty previously, so. HR's been doing a great job.
Well, there, there's strategies in place as well. Um, again, trying to rebuild the team and now having a little time off of this project. What you'll see is, you know, plumbers and electricians are usually gonna be taken by IBW in the private sector, and also Caltrans likes to take a lot of folks from our trades. Um, but there's definitely strategies in place, and teaming up with local community colleges and trade schools is gonna help as well. So we'll have, uh, you'll see a lot more, uh, I'd say, participation within the LinkedIn groups too, to, uh, ensure that we track folks down.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm...
You finished?
I'm complete.
Okay, um, our graffiti people?
Yes, Madam Mayor, so, part of, uh, what Segal's recommendation, they heard, uh, kind of Mayor and Council, what you all recommended, um, and it's listed...
It's gonna be two maintenance workers and, uh, one senior maintenance worker.
Yeah, it's the third or fourth down on that public works list.
Yes.
Um, so you'll see that, the number two on the full-time employee count has maintenance worker one and it has two, so those are actually the, the graffiti crew, along with the senior maintenance worker. So the senior maintenance worker will oversee the new maintenance crew, if you will. Um, and so there's, there's meet and confers in regards to this to look at some different options, whether it be title and things of that nature, but this is, we want, we knew that your request was to move on this as soon as we, as soon as possible, and so as soon as Segal finished, they, uh, added that into there for us.
Okay, did we did classification anal- analysis, recommended action, maintain or reword, did I miss that chart?
Yeah, that was, I think, your, your, your spin dial, it's like the second...
Right.
Kinda stepped out. I stepped out.
Reword, uh, eighty-seven classifications. Again, the numbers are, are, are kind of fluid though, as we're going along, talking with Segal, because a lot of it's gonna be working with labor, and if there's pushback on any of these where we wanna keep something the same, or if it doesn't just gel right with our internal classifications and structure, then these numbers may adjust slightly.
Okay, I, I was looking at, um, on page twenty-seven in the, um, of his report. Classification is, it's classification analysis and recommended action, maintain or reword. I just wanted to know what was the difference, I'm, I'm in the agenda package. Uh, I want to know what was the difference between an assistant director of community development, you just took off the word of, and it's, um, assistant director comma, community development, that's a, you just reworded the title, based upon Segal's recommendation.
Yes, or just basic retitling.
You just took the of off.
Right, some, and that's, and that kind of falls into where it says reword classifications. So that could be one of the eighty-seven, where they may have taken a word, they may have flipped a word, they may have replaced a title.
We have assistant director.
That's just the, the, the titles. Um, but that's what you're, that's what you're making reference to, Madam Mayor, so yes, when they take off the word of, or if they put a comma to replace that word, or they still, they still had listed it as a change, because that's...
I, I didn't know we had assistant director of community development myself.
We don't, um, we don't utilize it, it's a position that exists, or has existed years ago perhaps, but just never was funded. It was just part of the system, so we have several of those, and that's part of phase two is what's going to be, going through along with the unions. That's kind of another aspect that Josh will do within the meet and confer, is to go through and scrub through the listing of all classifications, which ones are still relevant, which are still being utilized, which ones aren't. The ones that are, aren't will basically bring you a list to say that we're going to remove these or delete these out of the system, if you will. And there's a ton of those.
Yeah, there's a ton, because I've, I've never seen this position and I'm looking at assistant planner. Okay, so you, those are just gonna be scrubbed and they may be eliminated, off the organizational chart.
They're not funded, but titles that haven't been used in years or aren't relevant to the department, based upon the recommendation of the department heads, management, and then, um, our HR department, then we'll bring those to, as a staff item to request those be...
Because I've never seen that, I'm a director, I know it's a director of community development, I know they're the assistant city manager, but I've never seen assistant director of community development on any organization's chart, so it's somewhere, we just need to deal with it.
Right, it's just, it's something we need to eliminate.
Okay, it's, okay, I hear you now, it's, it's there, it's not funded, it's someone else's, well, anyway, it's not there, because I've never seen it.
Yeah.
Okay, if it's not there, it's not there. And those are things you'll be looking at to say, we don't use it, it hasn't been filled for a hundred years, we don't need it.
That's right, yes, ma'am.
Maintenance, okay, I'm good, uh, I'm good. Okay, your next, okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, we're completed, but just to answer you really quick with some of the rewording, um, you'll see like, human resources director, they'll have director comma, human resources, and then you'll see that with like, finance director, they're trying to do uniformity throughout. Um, within those rewords, we might have changes within that class spec as well, when we go through and scrub each, uh, classification as well. So that's, that's gonna be phase two, it's gonna be more arduous, but we're gonna make sure uniform, uniformity is not just at the titles, but throughout that class spec.
Throughout the classification, what I, I think what I'm requesting is, if these positions have been laying around and they're on the organizational chart and they haven't been filled for whatever, take them off the organizational chart.
Right, they're not, that's the thing, they're not on the organizational chart, Madam Mayor, they're just, they may have been in existence from MOUs from twenty-five, thirty years ago.
Okay.
So they just stayed in the system.
Mm-hmm.
So kind of, I think what you're asking and kind of, the city attorney was just asking this, kind of the same question, why not just eliminate it now? The issue is, any titles or classifications that were ever approved in the city, they exist, they're just not funded. And in order to get, to eliminate those, there actually has to be a meet and confer through, uh, HR with the union to agree to say, we are striking this or eliminating this position, and then we would bring it forward to say, this has met, been met and conferred, this title's no longer in existence with the city. Then we actually have to send it to Cal Pur's, because those titles are still in existence with Cal Pur's.
Okay, assistant directors are in the union?
No.
Oh, so they could just be, okay.
Right, and then there's a resolution that we'd have to provide to...
Okay, I think we need to do that, because this is what my concern is. Uh, people have a way of looking at finding positions and say, well, it's in the organizational chart, let's fill it, because it's approved. My thinking on that is to remove them, and you come to council and ask to be, for them to be re-implemented, because this could, you could have a position and you're saying it's in the organizational chart. It's not, because it hasn't been filled for twenty-five years, but someone scanning through these charts could say, well, yes, it is, it's a part of our system. So while you're scrubbing, if they, that's my request, take them off of the organizational chart, because the organizational chart that I have, I've never seen this position, okay? So that's my request, if it's not a part of something we've approved, this body, it shouldn't be on there, because I know what'll happen.
Mayor, um, also what, uh, Will and I, or, sorry, Director, what we've been doing is, we're scrubbing our internal historical documentation, which is position control, and ensuring that, there's been a lot of cleanup to ensure that there's no replication of six city manager positions, we have...
Thank you.
Yep.
Six of you running around here, and somebody said, well, you, you have on your chart three, so we only have two, let's get another one.
Right.
Okay, and I don't want staff to be put in that kind of predicament, where someone comes down and say, hey, it's on there, uh, and we don't, Mr. City Manager, you do all the hiring and selecting of these positions, so, not us. So, okay, thank you, a good report for me.
Thank you.
Any questions here?
Madam Mayor, no questions, but, um, to move the agenda along, I'll make a motion. You ready?
You ready?
I'm ready. Okay, I will move, we approve the classification and compensation study phase one, recommendations, and wait for the reading and adopt resolution number twenty-four dot zero seven six, a resolution of the City of Carson City Council amending the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five budget in the general fund.
Thank you, and I wanna say thank you, because it, it answers question, it's transparency, because everybody, you know, I'm hearing comments about, you know, all these jobs that's come about, you're talking about five percent, come on now. Uh, and, and our employees make seventeen percent, we gave raises, uh, in the last three years, it totaled seventeen percent, am I correct?
That's correct, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so I think we've been very generous, and, and when I looked at what the difference was of what it would cost five percent to move a change of title, uh, our city's growing, let's grow with it, so thank you, let's go cast our vote.
The vote is unanimous, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, and may I just say now that, uh, the item is approved, I just wanted to thank publicly, uh, Josh, our HR Director, because this was a assignment that came out two years ago, um, and didn't move. Now, eighty percent of this project is complete, but when he arrived, uh, six months ago, yesterday, um, it was the only thirty percent complete. And so for him and the HR department to come together and get this done along with the standard task, it was a Herculean task, and I was very impressed to see that this was done, there's a lot of data. I mean, it's a hundred and twenty-seven pages of, um, data that breaks down every aspect, and so for him to have to go through that, comb through that along with staff, and then them still handle the day-to-day operations, uh, was just really impressive, it speaks to his professionalism and the team's professionalism, so just wanted to give them kudos for all the work that they've done on it.
Well, I wanna give him kudos also, and to our public works director, I will leave you alone, Josh, you can stay another six months. Yeah! Okay, item number thirty-six? Consider local and uncontested appointments to the city council, um, before I add mine, does anyone have any to add?
Councilwoman?
Yes, I do have a, um, for the Public Safety Commission, so I'd like to appoint Lawrence Flinton.
Flinton?
F-L-I-N-T-O-N, yes, yes. So he will be my uncontested appointee.
Can you repeat the commission, um, Councilwoman, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry? Public Safety Commission, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To, yes, okay?
MPT? Let me see.
I've got one vacancy, Madam Mayor.
The uncontested, we don't need to vote on, it's automatic.
This, uh, vacancy is in Public Safety Commission, as my uncontested appointment, I'll appoint Mr. Louis Kogut.
Could it be the last name, councilmember? The last name, councilmember dear?
I'm sorry?
The last name, please.
Kogut, uh, you have him on your file, on file, because he was on the... Cogut, uh, you have him on your file, on file, because he was on the commission for years, just recently removed, last meeting.
He's recently appointed.
For the sake of the meeting, do you mind spelling the last name?
Say again?
Spelling the last name.
Spell his last name, C-O-G-U-T, I think?
Oh, Cogut, okay, yeah, it's not clear, thank you.
Okay. Councilman Hicks?
My, my question is just to determine quorum when we have these commission meetings. I'm still having some of my commissioners calling me saying they go to a meeting and it's not a quorum, and they wasted their time.
Which one is that?
U-utility users.
U-utility?
Measure C.
On measure C oversight? Man, I thought they were meeting strong.
No, no, I'm, but my question is about, there never has been a quorum, and it seems as if, I don't know who's staffing that, but I know that I was told that the staff person that's over that committee has changed, and now there's a new staff person, but no one is actually running the ship.
They're running the own ship?
Yeah, that's our ask as well, is that we're notified if there's a change in the staff, if there's, if we're not notified, then we don't know.
Measure C oversight, because they were meeting, they gave recommendations.
Yeah, we will follow up with staff and find out if there's been a change.
Okay.
And if there hasn't been a change, I think what we need to do is what we had to do, uh, at, at previous commission, when they weren't meeting, uh, we need to make a list of who has not been showing up, if they are, we need to deal with them, and then also, um, the next meeting, once you call all of them, just let them know, uh, one of us will be there in attendance. You have a full house. Oh, for me, I'd like to, under the Environmental Commission, so all these were uncontested, but my, under the Environmental Commission, uh, I'd like to appoint Ezekiel Swazer, his phone number is three ten, well, you have his phone number.
Mr. Swazer came by the office earlier today and dropped off an application.
For the Human Relations, Hector Calderona, C-A-L-I-D-O-Cal-dona, C-A-L-I-D-O-N-I-O. I have his phone number if you need it.
Has Mr. Calderona submitted an application?
I think so, did he? Oh, he already has one here, because I have a copy of it.
Okay.
It's been around for a while.
If he, if there's an application in.
Yeah, he has one on file.
Okay. I would just try to avoid saying his phone number on air.
My uncontested on Public Works is, um, Ryan McNicholas.
Mac Nickle?
For my alternate number one, is it number one? Yeah. Emmanuel.
Which commission, alternate number one?
Public Works.
Same one, okay.
Emmanuel O-B-I-R-A, I have his phone number. For my alternate, uh, for the Senior Citizen Advisory, Pauline Davis.
Can you repeat that, please?
Pauline Davis. And for the, uh, Veterans Affairs, move up, um, Romeo Gallion from the alternate number one to the permanent position, which is uncontested, on the Veterans Affairs Commission. Got that? And for the Women's Issues Commission, alternate number three is Barona, B-R-O-N-I-Johnson. You have that?
Yes.
And for the Mobile Home Park, Resident Owner, alternate number two, Sheila Richardson. And that's it, and that's my motion.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve your appointments that are not, that are requiring a ratification.
It's been moved improperly, second cashier vote.
It's unanimous, Madam Mayor.
Yes, and, and please, please, Mr. City Manager, if there's not a quorum, uh, let us know ASAP before the next meeting. And I do have a couple of the applications, so you should have them also, would you like them? You have them filed? Oh, here's, here's four of them right here.
Madam Mayor, just for clarification, while you're going through those applications, once they're appointed, um, if they have an application on file, or if they don't, we, we want to get that information first, but the next thing is that they get a packet from our office, so depending on when the commission meeting is, if they haven't taken the oath, or done their statement of affirmation, or watched the two-hour video on ethics, I think it is, they're not eligible to serve yet, so I think, maybe, not in all cases, but in some cases, there just may be a gap in that, that doesn't have anything necessarily to do with attendance of, of quorum, but sometimes there are appointments made, and they, the commissioner thinks that they're immediately eligible to serve, and that is not the case. So, uh, we try our best to communicate with them if they contact our office directly, but sometimes there's communication that happens outside of the clerk's office, with the staff of the commission directly to the commissioner, or the, you know, commissioner-elect, if you will, for lack of a better words. So, I just think that there's, there's a whole kind of like wraparound service, they can't actually go to a commission meeting until they've come in, taken the oath, submitted their paperwork.
Well, we have some, uh, when you run into those difficulties, we all have, uh, county reps that can assist you in calling them, not in doing them, but if you're running into them and you're not getting them, I think, especially with mine, I'd like you to reach out and say, hey, they're not responding, and so I can say, if you want to serve, serve, you need to be there at such and such a time. Okay?
Okay.
And I'm also looking at the Planning Commission, uh, he thought he was off, but he is not, Jaime Montecarlo, he's an alternate, and that's what he, we, we put him on the alternate position for the Planning Commission. Uh, but he, someone told him he was off, we took him out of the permanent position and put him in the alternate, so he's still active. So those are the applications, the ones that I recommended. You should have copies in your office. So it's been moved improperly, second did we vote?
Yes, Madam Mayor, it's unanimous.
Memorial adjournments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, these are the names that I received. Solomon Mo Salomano, Noberto Javier, Barbara Cole, Dr. Manuel Basuli, Jimmy Luis Stevens, Roy Leonard Stern, Melody Persley Moses.
Yes, we should, that's for her.
Uh, can I add two people to the list? Bishop Robert Douglas and Reggie Webb. Reggie Webb is the father of Kareem Webb, who's the owner of Buffalo Wild Wings, uh, right here in the city of Carson, owned a chain of, uh, McDonald's, uh, in the community. Uh, so, and then we just take a moment of silence for one of our lost, uh, staff members, Mo. Anybody else, anybody to add before the mayor asks me to pray?
Could we add, um, our de facto, and put his name on the agenda? Okay, MPT?
Uh, Father, tonight we pray for these families whose names were called tonight. We pray that you would, uh, give their family peace and comfort. Uh, we pray for our city as a whole tonight, we pray for our staff, uh, we pray for Public Works, we pray for everyone who interacted and encountered Mo, we pray for Mo's family. We pray that you would bless them and keep them, and make your face shine upon them, and be gracious to them. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Thank you. Councilmembers request to add items? All communications councilmembers. Councilwoman, anything? MPT?
Uh, yes, I wanna, last night, I wanna just, um, thank the staff. I want to take a moment to thank the Soke Japan students and their hosting families. Last night's farewell dinner was wonderful, and we had a great time, the exchanging of gifts and enjoying each other's company. Uh, and a special thank you to our dedicated staff who worked hard to make the program a success. Uh, Latoya Butler, Danielle Haisley, Erica Gico, Margie Reveal, and Kent Tran. Your efforts are greatly appreciated, and thank you all for being a part of this memorable experience. Uh, and we had a great time last night. Uh, I do want to say to, um, everybody, our fam fest, uh, is fastly approaching on Saturday, August twenty-fourth, at Stevenson Park, uh, from twelve to six, we have wonderful guests, we got DW Three, Dietrich Haddon, The Block Party. Uh, it's gonna be phenomenal, uh, you can purchase cabanas, uh, and all of that stuff by contacting the park, uh, and the cabanas are at eight fifty, you don't want to miss it, and I'm excited about it, that we're gonna be at Stevenson Village, and we have our Volunteer Association, uh, meeting as well, and our Stevenson, uh, Park volunteers. And I want to say this to our mayor, uh, as the city ambassador, uh, my prayers are with you. Uh, may, uh, our Father grant you traveling grace, and have favor in your negotiations, your engagement, and your productive return for the city of Carson and our beloved residents. Uh, go out there and put Carson on the map for us. And we appreciate your efforts, and, uh, as you always do, represent us well, thank you so much.
I'm not gonna pay you tonight, but, you know. Uh, thank you for those, uh, thank you, MPT. Uh, it's always, uh, good to have, uh, comments from your colleagues, and you always have those knee-seers that come and try to rain on our parade. I'm not traveling for pleasure, and everybody knows that this mayor can travel wherever she wants to ahead of time, and I'm going on city business to talk about, uh, what's the infrastructure and economic impact and the community benefits, and just to see how it's laid out, so, you know, you get those knee-seers that come up here and want to rain on our parade, but I'm glad it didn't go over. To our Public Works Director, thank you for providing this traffic signal update, uh, about the Diamond Dell, uh, the central installation, Delamo Boulevard, the Stamps Drive, uh, I'm gonna ask that we kind of, uh, put that in a, just these, these brief things, because they've been of interest to all the residents. Any, um, signals that we've completed are the ones that are in the process of being completed, because we're still getting, uh, requests, and when are we gonna get a signal and so forth? And then, um, my other question is, are we getting ready to start Phase Four of the street pavement project? And that letter will be going out?
Yes, that's, I actually just got that report from Dr. Rogers yesterday, so that, that is actually starting.
Okay.
So Phase Four will be starting, and you'll get that, the residents will get that information of who's, that's going to affect.
They're gonna get it now?
Yes, ma'am.
They'll be getting, okay, good.
It's coming, it's coming to the residents, that it's getting produced now.
Yeah, make sure we all get a copy of that.
Yes, ma'am, we'll do.
Yeah, because it's, that's a big project, and I just want to say kudos to our Public Works Director. Job well done for what we're doing, and, and you, when you drive through the city, that's what the residents are saying, thank you, thank you, thank you, our streets, and when are you gonna get to my street, uh, it's a process, we can't do them all overnight, so. Am I next, or whatever, so we, we hear that all the time, and the street sidewalks. I still do have a concern about the street sweeping of the sidewalks around our city, as I walk through the city. Those streets, uh, I know we, uh, we had talked to, the sidewalk sweeping, sidewalk sweeping, talked about purchasing our own machine so we could keep our streets clean, not the interior, but the outside, down to Delamo, around Sepulveda, Wilmington and all that. Where are we on that?
Yes, thanks, Madam Mayor, uh, if, if you recall, that's the contract we were gonna bring back a little bit later. It, it, um, will need to be amended at some point. Um, however, we have asked the contractor to ensure they ramp up, uh, the activity so that they can match the demand in the community, specifically around the university, uh, where we know those problem spots are.
They're around, if you walk throughout the city, because I walk, and, uh, it just doesn't feel like what we're doing on our streets, the sidewalks are filthy, we also have, I don't know how we're gonna address this, people with these dogs pooping all over the place, on the sidewalks, um, I don't know how we're gonna address that, so let's put our heads together and come with something, because it's not nice to walk out and it's poop everywhere. I know we started ticketing some people when they were in a certain part of the city and it stopped. Maybe we just put code enforcement out there, so, thank you for that. Friday, we won't have a meeting in August, but our Career Job Fair is August thirtieth, from nine to one, at the Community Center. We have so many, uh, bring your application, everyone, because people are gonna be hired on the spot. Uh, I hear that the, uh, ra, uh, TV, CBS, and all, big companies are coming out. Uh, so have your resume to Carson residents, uh, the unions will be there in force. They will be hiring on the spot, giving train, um, training sessions and so forth, so if you're looking for a job on August thirtieth, nine to one, at the Carson event, consider myself in partnership with the South Bay Work Investment Board and the Carson Citizens Cultural Arts Foundation. Last year, we had over seven hundred people at that event, we're expecting more people this year because, um, the advertisement and, and, people need jobs, so we want to provide them with an opportunity, that's our career fair. The, um, Carson, It's All About Me Women's Health Conference, is gonna be Friday, October eighteenth, at the Carson Event Center. Uh, a great event for ladies, we need to talk about our health issues, it's all about us ladies. And we will, we have over, the event has grown, so we have, first we started, I would just, one doctor, we have two doctors in every session because of the interest from the, uh, medical community. And we have a great guest speakers that are lined up, wear your pink, and I think the tickets went on sale today? The tickets were going, were early, tickets will go on sale tomorrow at nine o'clock, uh, early registration is fifty dollars, and after September, who, twenty-five? Oh, the tickets are, no, if you pre-sell, they're fifty. And after that, they go up just five dollars, but we want to encourage the ladies to register, so you can get your sessions, because the sessions fill up really fast. So call my Esha or Raven if you have any questions, but it is at the Event Center. We had over seven hundred ladies dressed in pink, ladies, wear your pink, and come out and, um, enjoy our Women's Health Conference. And that's all I have.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Hicks.
Thank you. I just want to say to the Soke City, Japan that came out, the delegate was a very nice event last night for the going away, going home. I was surprised at the delegates that were here, the majority were sixteen-year, sixteen, and one was nineteen, so they were very young, and to have that experience of coming from Japan to America was, uh, priceless. Um, on the tenth of, uh, August, which is this coming Saturday, I'm doing my backpack giveaway in conjunction with Carson Community Outreach and Victory Outreach. We have about a thousand and fifteen hundred backpacks that we're gonna be giving away from eleven o'clock until about three o'clock, and they're doing a car show and other activities at the Carson Community Center on the east parking lot next to the Doubletree Hotel. Continuing with my annual town hall meeting, the next one is at Perry Mini Park, on the fifteenth, at six thirty PM. Those that are in the Perry Park area, you know I've been over there all the time, so come on out, and we'll get more information about what's happening in your community and in your neighborhood. And the, it's here again, the annual occasion in Blues White Linen Affair, which is gonna be on September the seventh here at the Community Center. Um, headlining this year is John B., will be performing along with, uh, Mike Phillips, Elaine Gibbs, and Second Line Dance, and we'll be out there doing our New Orleans-style party that we have every year for ca- And we'll be out there doing our New Orleans-style party that we have every year for Cajun and Blues. Second is on my annual prostate cancer walk, which is the fifth year at Cal State University Dominguez Hills. So as the mayor talked about women's health, there's men's health as well that needs to be addressed, and it will be at Cal State University Dominguez Hills at eight AM. It is a five-k walk. I tell everybody, if I can walk it, anybody can walk it. So come on out there and walk this five-k with me. We're at Cal State Dominguez Hills on the fourteenth. And the last one is to our mayor, Godspeed to Paris. You know, like I said, take your time going, but hurry back. But make sure you get all the information that we need to have so that we can be the world-class representation for the City of Carson for these Olympics.
Well, I'm going to be there. You're world-class. I didn't mention the SoCal City. I had, I mean, great energy there. Thank you to the staff. I have one request. Anytime youth are coming to the City of Carson, when we have a delegation, we should have youth there with them. Those senior citizens, bless their little hearts.
They were sixteen, sixteen.
And we did, they came on board. But you have to involve your Recreation and Community Services. You must involve the Youth Commission or, or at least two kids from every park. And what we found out before when this happened, that was lifelong relationships that was built. When I go to SoCal, Japan, there's people that meet me at the airport. We've been knowing each other forever. And one of the ladies, the leader of the group, came here, and she had a picture of her host family. That's how important it was to her. Young people want to communicate with young people, not senior citizens on Jeritah. I'm talking about me. I'm talking about me. I was there. I went out. I went to Universal Studios. Yeah, I wrote the rise. I went because I wrote, I did. But, you know, that was a conversation that I had. They need to communicate with young people. You have a, a very, very active recreation department. If you can't get six to twelve kids to go to places that they haven't even seen themselves, and they live here in the United States. But the young, the tour guide said, this was my dream to come to the United States. And so PIO, whoever's in charge, whenever we have young people who come, we're partnering with Aqua. We need young people out there, you know, because they start enjoying themselves when they were brown people, and they built relationships. Each of the people that were, young people that were assigned, was assigned a student from SoCal City, and that became their partner. So please, please, please. We do a good job in planning, but sometimes we forget that these are young people. Okay? And even though they enjoyed seeing me at university and were shocked, I was too. But, you know, I just want to make sure we do that. And Mike Whitaker should always, or whoever's the director of Parks and Recreation should always be contacted, whoever has a youth commission. Because that's something that they could do, just like our Public Relations, our Veterans Affairs. They need to be involved. So that's my request, to put it on as a recommendation to whoever planned this, with your Recreation and Community Service Department. There was an event at Dignity, I think it was Dignity. We had not one child from Carson up there, because they just wouldn't plan, yeah. They just wouldn't plan the event. Mike, you, I think you're familiar with this. I don't know if you were, but I was told, we didn't have, we didn't have any involvement with it, but you came right in our backyard and you presented a, it was some kind of a training or something they had up there for them. And then when I go to DeAnthony's Nike Real Run in the clinic, that gym should be bursting out with kids from Carson, from Carson Parks and Recreation. It's not. Girls should be there, because he, he gives such wonderful gifts, and it's a good training. They have mentoring and everything else, so less you a better job of getting our kids involved, because we have a lot to offer. And parents will say, I don't have, I don't have anything to do. That's not true. You do just need to be aware of it and come partaking in. And the man that will make that happen is sitting in the back of the room. Right, Mike? He just needs to know. Okay. And that's it. That's all I have. I'm going to have to go home and pack for a flight plane, and I'm leaving tomorrow. I think I'll wear what I have on all week. Thank you. And if there's no further comments, staff, any comments? Meeting is adjourned. Have a blast. I've, you've already been accused of having a blast. We probably adjourned.
I'm going to say goodnight to everyone. I think that they've heard enough. And have a great trip to, to France and bring, bring back some wine. French wine.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
You need to check on the flag, because we do, every coast city gets the Olympic flag. So we will have one. We need to make sure that we have.
If not, we'll borrow one from LA, because she's going to have it.
In our city.
I'm going to request that.
No, we need one too.
Our own, but I think we should request.
Are we adjourned?
Yes.
Were we adjourned?
We're just having general conversation. The meeting is adjourned, yes.